So let's get started. This is the March 11th, 2019, continued public hearing for Surseide Crossing 40B, Surseide Crossing LLC. So... What do... The minutes, Eleanor, are from the regular meeting, which we would approve at the regular meeting, wouldn't we?
Yes.
Okay. So that was just for reading purposes. All right. So I thought what we'd do today is start with a summary of the two work sessions. I thought maybe Ed Marshawn, you could do that.
Very good. I will give... My name's Ed Marshawn. I'm Chapter 40B advisor to the CBA. And I acted as facilitator for the two work design work sessions that were held. One on February 4th, one on February 22nd. Just as an overview, the work sessions, at least in my opinion, I think it was probably shared by all, were constructive and they were certainly conducted in a solid manner. I believe that they led to improvements in both the site plan and the building design. I think everybody had an opportunity, we tended to participate with their comments. And of course, a work session is not a forum where any decisions can be made. The object of the work session is to be able to discuss a project in a more intimate environment and then bring a report back to the board, and the board picks up at that point. At the... I'm just going to give a very brief summary of the work sessions. I believe the applicant is going to do a presentation in terms of how the design of both the site and the buildings have evolved from day one. At the February 4th work session, the primary presentation was by Cliff Bomer. Cliff Bomer is a registered architect. He's the CEO of a firm that specializes in the design of mixed income and affordable housing, very experienced. And he was asked to come up with some alternative designs. He came up with three sketches. I think they'll probably be presented today. There was a discussion of the advantages and disadvantages, what people like, what they might not like about each of those three sketches. There evolved a consensus for sketch number three. Sketch number three, I think the particular interest was that it was better at integrating the condo, what I'm going to call the cottage buildings, which were sale single family buildings, and the condominium multi-family buildings. And it also introduced a green space, a continuous green space, which I referred to as tongue that comes into the site, that I think the person attending the work session itself was more attractive than the other alternatives. And other comments that Cliff made, he was concerned about the original design because of the streetscape, what he called tech, which I guess is an architectural firm, but it was really the discontinuity between the cottages and the multi-family condo buildings, that they were really separate in this state. Did he... Cliff, if you knew Cliff, you know he is really interested in creating a sense of community. He thought that that would not lead to creation of a strong community. He wanted to see the condo units integrated better with the cottage units. He also expressed a concern about functionality of the condo units in terms of the flow plans and the relationship of the outdoor space and private patios, and also the fact that there was significant amount of habitable space in the lower level, which I referred to as a basement. So there were comments on each of those plans, as I said. And given that consensus was reached on alternative number three, the applicant was asked if he would consider developing a revised plan, and the applicant agreed to do that. And between the two work sessions, Cliff was able to meet with the applicant and the design architect, Chris, and talk through the plan more. So that led to work session number two, that was held on February 22nd. The applicant was able, was requested to and complied with distributing its revised plan in advance of that meeting. So I think everybody had a chance to look at those to prepare for the meeting. It was a little surprise because the actual number of units were not... 104 units, consisting of 36 cottages, eight duplex units, four buildings, and 60 condos. These buildings were total of 104 units. The bedrooms decreased slightly, I think it was from 285 to 281, was the last proposal. That site plan, and basically the site plan incorporated that green space that extended throughout the site. The other advantage of that plan, I think people liked, were the curvilinear roads, because that just felt better. I mean, sometimes you look at a site plan and you've got this distinctive feel that feels right. There are also some duplexes that were positioned on South Shore Road that received favorable comments. One person expressed that the parking, placing the parking on the inside of the lot as opposed to the edges of the lot was good. One person commented that they liked the asymmetrical layout of the site, because that sort of made it more possible to create that green space that ran through the site. The comments were they would prefer better integration of the cottages and condos, and there was still a concern about the size of the multi-family buildings and the number of bedrooms. One person said they'd like to see varying lot sizes rather than have them all fairly standard 50-foot frontage lots. One person said there should be common vocabulary among buildings. It didn't have to look like, but there's a sort of a common vocabulary that has, makes the buildings relate to each other. Density remains too high. And then there was again a follow-up meeting with the approval of the members of the CBA for Cliff to meet again with the applicant and their architect. That was Josh, Chris, I'm not sure if Jamie could make that meeting or maybe participated by Paul on that meeting. I did not anticipate a no smaller meeting. That led to the submission of the current design. I'm going to let the applicant walk us through that, and that's what I think the board will be reviewing. Now, I'd just like to add some additional comments if I could.
Absolutely.
I've worked on a lot of 40Bs. I've worked on probably 160 40Bs. A majority of those have actually been in this realm, advising CBA's, although I also represent developers. I'd like to think I bring an objective perspective to that. So we've been negotiating a long time, and what my experience has been is, the critical issue on 40Bs is always the site plan and the building design. And that's always related to one word: density. Boards aren't supposed to talk about density, because it's clear in the 40B sort of history, particularly history at the HAC, that density by itself is meaningless. It should be, the board should take into consideration other factors, primarily design factors, open space. Now, developers don't want to negotiate, although they've been sort of, they certainly came in with 156, what I call the shock and awe layer. That went down to 100 units, and back up to 104. There was one glance of a sketch at 88 units. So how do you resolve that? Because they don't want to negotiate with themselves, because no matter what developer says, boards normally want less. So there comes a time where the board has to say, here's what we like, here's what we think we could get behind. We might not love it, but we think we could work in, rather than work in an adversarial relationship. Because so many of my experience representing developers, developers don't want to be in an adversarial relationship, because after you get your permit, there's still a lot of stuff to do. So it's always good if you can work out an agreement between yourself and the CBA. So one of the ways to do that is for the board to think about what some of those design standards might be, and to try to come up with some objective measures. One of them might be frontage. We know the frontage on the 805B. Is that acceptable? Would you like to see something larger than that? Setbacks. I worked on a recent 40B where the board said, here's the minimum setback between two adjacent units. Minimum lot size, I'm not sure that's as critical as frontage and setbacks, because that can really vary, and it's really a function of what size house you're putting on the lot. Street width, sidewalks, arc fraction, those are the standards, and that's what we'd normally say, look, see what you can do with those standards, and see what you can come back with, and if the developer's willing to take a look at that, usually progress can be made. So that's been my experience, and again, I'm not going to go into the details of the current proposal. That's the applicant who present that. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the work session if there are.
Go ahead, Jack.
At the end of the second work session...
Hold on one second, Jack. Hold on one second. Does anybody know where the music is coming from?
I can go ask.
Can they pump up to, you know, Adele or something? So, okay. It is worse.
It could be much worse than what they're listening to.
At the end of the second session, there were two sketches generated that were supposed to be looked at, and maybe brought to this meeting, and it seems like neither of them were... Well, maybe the first one, maybe Mr. Bomer's sketch was brought to this meeting, or filled out and brought to this meeting. But the one actually, from my point of view, the one that people were interested in was the Mr. Welsh's sketch, and I was looking forward to seeing, you know, that fleshed out and seeing what that would yield as far as a more acceptable design, and it wasn't... We went sort of back to the same design that we walked into the February 22nd.
Right. At the end of that, there was sort of a charade to sort of take the plan and mark it up. I think that's a question for the applicant.
I agree, Jack. I think that question would be best put to the applicant.
It was just left out of Mr. Marshawn's narrative, that those were generated, and I just wanted to get that under.
Okay. Yeah, there were multiple ideas generated, all of which hopefully the applicant took into account, or at least considered, but anyway. So is there anything specific about, anything else that we want to ask of Ed in terms of the work sessions? No. Okay. So why doesn't the applicant give us their current, give us an overview of the current site plan?
For the record, Peter Freeman for the applicant, and we're just going to go right to Chris Thomas, who will present the results of the workshop. So, thank you.
Thank you. I like it. Thank you.
Hopefully you all have your own packets.
Yeah, we have.
I'm worried that you've had trouble turning around and seeing things on the screen. So this is essentially our chronology. The next three slides are the three different site plans that Cliff Bamer put together, ordered chronology in a chronological fashion, one, two, and three. And as Ed mentioned, this was the, this was the scheme that really seemed to garner the most attention, and it's what we focused on essentially. So this is, this is what we saw at that very first working session from Cliff, and we've essentially worked on that basis to continue to develop. Let's, if we go to the next slide. Jump back one. Yeah, so, so what the 2-4 workshop was requested by the participating CBA, and others had sketch three be further developed. The following plan, a refinement of sketch number three, was then presented at the 2-22 workshop. So this plan essentially adopts some of the characteristics of Cliff's plan. The condos are oriented to the northern portion of the site. There are 60 units in this plan, and this was essentially our first pass at developing an alternative site plan.
Chris, can I interrupt you for one second? Can somebody volunteer to go ask the kids?
I think they did.
Eleanor, Eleanor.
Did they not?
The ladies, did she turn it down? It sounded like they...
They turned it back up.
They turned it down, but...
So they've done five well tests.
What happened? They can...
I mean, it's pretty long.
Why do kids rule the world? I don't understand.
But that's, we're going to take that up at the next series.
They're going to start playing like Black Sabbath or something.
Sorry, Chris. I used to have a difficulty hearing.
Me too.
So, start again. I apologize.
All the way back?
No, 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 no.
Is the mic on?
No, the mic is only to pick it up for the camera, unfortunately.
I can hear you.
Do we have a mic that actually amplifies?
Well, I can certainly amplify in my own voice.
Yeah, amplify, Chris, please.
Okay. Okay. So this is what we first looked at, at the very first working session. If you go to the next slide.
Excuse me, Ed. Chris, could you just point out where the duplex units were on that plan?
In this plan, the duplex units were essentially along South Shore Road, those four lots. Condominiums were in that region there. They're primarily eight-unit buildings, which means there are four modules, because we're stacking townhouse-type units with studios or one-bedroom apartments. Based on feedback and commentary, and we developed further refinement on the plans, making the multi-family units blend in with the streetscape with the main circulation at Surseide Crossing, based on that. So now what we're looking at is a plan where these, this is all single-family here. These are four duplex buildings, and then these are six condo buildings that are eight units, four units, eight units, eight units, eight units, and then four units again here. And in doing that, we also, we had a meeting with Cliff, and he really encouraged us to create some public space here, some open space that was in this area between the buildings, that had a very strong pedestrian link, so that this public space essentially was a draw for the entire community. And so this landscape plan, there's actually an enlarged plan on the next slide, but basically establishes what that link is from the rec building, pathways here, so, you know, we're thinking that there are sort of outdoor spaces across here, and then more open space here for play fields. Pull down here, and then undefined outdoor space there, but with a very strong link and pathway back to that space. We're calling it a basketball court, a sports court, and there's some picnic and barbecue pavilions there as well. Okay. Can you go back to the streetscape? Keep going, one more. I think it was at the February 22nd workshop that Cliff felt that it would be beneficial for us to do a streetscape, as to what you'd be looking at from, if you could go back just one. So what's the view along here? Now, remember, there are four duplexes here. So what's the view looking from that main road back toward the north? And so we basically developed, these are the condo, duplex unit designs here. So these are the duplexes here, condo building here, and a condo building here. We actually made, that's a four-unit condo building here, so it's much smaller. It almost has the same frontage as the duplex units. And then ghosted in the back are the other condominium buildings. Thank you. Okay. Keep going. Okay. Now, we're going to get into concept sketches for... Okay. You've seen a lot of these plans to some degree, so this is what we've been calling the 30-foot building, which is a condominium building. It's got four modules in it. The, as I referenced, upside-down townhouses. They're either three-bedroom townhouses represented, that's a three-bedroom townhouse, that's a three-bedroom townhouse, and the others in between are two-bedroom. The three-bedroom townhouses have two bedrooms, the lower level, and the two-bedroom townhouses have one bedroom at the lower level. Let's go to the first floor plan.
Is the lower level a basement, or is it on the first floor?
It's the lower level. So if you want to call it basement, it's below grade.
Is my problem, this chair? Did you ever get your question?
The question was, is the...
Is the lower level a basement?
Yes, is the answer.
Are these four-unit buildings or eight?
They're four modules, so that basically makes eight units.
Okay. I'm just clarifying, just because I'm doing my math and I...
The smaller, the smaller four-module building is...
Eight units, yes.
Yeah, this plan you're looking at.
The smaller module is a four-unit building.
Where there's two modules, yes.
Two modules, I'm sorry, yes.
I just wanted to clarify.
Go ahead, Chris. Let's make it through the presentation.
I'm going to jump back to the site plan. You don't have to, but I just want to reference that the tallies here. This current site plan that we were just looking at with the landscaping...
Can you go back to the slide, please?
Okay. Now we're looking at, in the original plan that we came in with, after the initial working session, we had 60 condos. This plan has 40 condos in it, 40 condo units.
Oh, I counted 48, but maybe I'm obviously...
You're counting the duplexes as condos?
Yeah, I'm not.
They're counting it as something different.
Oh, I'm counting them as condos, sorry.
And 44 single-family cottage lots, and then four duplex lots.
Total of 96 units?
Correct.
92? Okay, so we have, say that again, 42?
Forty condos, multi-family.
I have this number here. There are eight units located in four two-unit duplex buildings. There are 44 single-family cottages, and there are 40 multi-family condos.
All right, let's let Chris get through it, and then we'll pepper him with questions.
Okay. So let's go to the first floor plan. So actually, if we could jump back to the basement plan, I just want to also illustrate that storage for all the units, not just the townhouse units, but also the studio and one-bedroom units, they have storage space that's either immediately adjacent to the unit, in the case of the two-bedroom and the three-bedroom units, or is accessible from the exterior by an area way for the studio and the one-bedroom units. Okay. First floor plan. So this, you've seen this 30-footer again, first floor plan. There's a bedroom suite, a master suite, at this primary living level, the first floor level in all these units. And then at the second floor plan, we either have one-bedroom or studio-type apartments. Our next slide is, again, you've seen this elevation, and I know, I remember, Lisa, you had commented that we had an earlier sketch where we had some dormers along this eve line here, and you found that preferable, and I do too, and in understanding how this all works here, we can drop that eve there and also essentially provide dormers along that face between the two gables. And then side view. I think one of the things that, I don't know if it's apparent in the drawings, but we've made an effort to essentially try to give every one of these multi-family units a sense of their own entry, so that if you go around, if you circumnavigate the building, essentially, we have entry points all the way around the perimeter, so that you're not just looking at a facade of five, six, seven, eight doors, and entry points. And this kind of can give you some illustration of the outdoor spaces that would be created for each unit. Okay. Any question? Okay. So this next building, again, you've seen this is what we've been calling the 32-footer, and this is the lower level. Now, this lower level is different than the previous 30-foot module in that essentially they're halfway up out of the ground, and so that you're down a half-flight to these lower-level units, which both have outdoor terraces here, and here, here, and here, here, and here, here, and here, so forth and so on. Additionally, they have their own storage space that's incorporated. In fact, all the storage spaces for these units are incorporated internally, so that there's no basement storage that's dedicated to one particular unit. At the second, at the first floor... So now at the first floor, we've got flanking on both sides, we've got three-bedroom, and these are true, these are not upside-down townhouses, but they're two-townhouse units. Three bedrooms on the flanking sides with the two-bedroom units in the middle. Second floor plan. I also think it's important, now, we've done a little bit of study on the massing for this. If we could go to the next slide, where we have a proposed front elevation. This is, this basically is scaling out at 32 feet in height, but we've also done some other massing, that's gable massing, and we can actually get the height of this structure to 30 feet, so. And this is the tallest building in our design at the moment, so, and we could, if necessary, get it down to 30 feet without compromising any of the aspects of the project. Okay, and again, I touched on the outdoor spaces for the lower-level units, which are basically lower-level terraces, and then the outdoor spaces for the flanking three-bedroom units here and here, and for the two-bedroom units, they'll have spaces essentially back here, I'm sorry, back here. So we've consciously addressed providing outdoor living space, not just for what's within the overall community, but also outdoor living spaces for each individual multi-family unit. This is the lower-level plan, if you want to call it, just to sort of understand what this lower level is, it's a basement level essentially. Again, but it's two modules, which means there are four units here, and it really has ultimately the same configuration as the 30-footer that we looked at earlier. So first floor plan.
This may have been confusing to some of you, the typo. Some of you may have received this, and it says second floor plan.
Oh. Oh, my apologies. So, that's lower level. That is first floor. That's first floor. That is first floor, that's first floor. So, you know, again, if I, if you could go back to the first-floor plan, two modules here, the entry points for those two modules, they're townhouses essentially, is from, to the three-bedroom unit and to the two-bedroom unit from here, and then, the one-bedroom apartment has its access here, and the studio apartment has its access here. So, again, trying to essentially provide a sense of propriety and a sense of being distinct, having distinct and separate entry points. And there's a representative second-floor plan. It's the first time we've looked at this with this board, so this is a, you know, an imagery elevation of what this could mass out to be. You know, obviously, there can be other sort of architectural styles to vary things here. Side elevation, so, we've essentially provided you with front elevation and left-side elevations on these buildings, we haven't gone all the way around, but I think you can probably infer to some degree what the other elevations will look like. And then, finally, the outdoor living spaces for those four units, and they, you know, essentially radiate all the way around the perimeter there. So, there's really never any kind of front or back with these multi-family units. One point, before I get away, that's it on the multi-family units. One point I wanna make on the multi-family roof material will be architectural asphalt. I know I've said that in the past, but I think there was some confusion about them being wood. All the cottages will have wood shingles for the roof, but on the multi-family units, they will be architectural asphalt shingles.
Including the duplexes?
So, duplexes will be architectural asphalt.
Okay, so just the four-unit and the eight-unit condos?
Clarification, duplexes will be wood.
Right, just the four-unit multi-family and the eight-unit multi-family will be asphalt.
Can you go back to the first floor? Duplex, you know, essentially, it's a townhouse, so, there's a lower level there that's dedicated a hundred percent to the footprint of that particular duplex or townhouse is devoted to storage and mechanical space, so there's no living space below within these units. These have front and back, or side, points of entry, so, unlike with the multi-family units.
It's just hard to get a sense of scale, how long is the right elevation of this duplex? Just that ridge length, there's no graphic scale.
I wanna say it's probably around forty feet, maybe forty-two feet.
It's twenty-seven, okay, it'll be helpful at some point to get dimensions.
If you're thinking about the fifty-foot, we're not there...
No, I wasn't thinking about that, I was just thinking about...
What's whatever the module is, what is the module length?
That's about forty-two.
Forty-two?
Yeah.
Plus or minus?
Right.
So, side view of the duplex, relatively similar to the sort of the front view. Okay, so, I think this, I don't know if you wanna...
You can summarize the chart, go ahead.
Okay, multi-family buildings, forty, we've already been through this, and we've got... Okay, so forty multi-family units, forty for cottages, single families, and then four duplexes, so there's eight duplexes, eight units within the duplexes total. We also have a breakdown of the affordable and the market-rate units.
You say in your note here that there is going to be an even distribution along the lines of the bedrooms, so we don't have to worry about that. I mean, we will ultimately, but that is the plan.
What does that mean?
It means that the prorata of distribution of three one-bedrooms will be the same... Yeah, that twenty-five percent, in other words, the affordables won't all be one-bedrooms.
Got it.
As twenty-five percent of the forty, total.
I understand. How many bedrooms total are we?
Beds total on the...
Multi-family?
On the multi-family, seventy, plus twenty-four in the duplexes, so ninety-four.
Ninety-four bedrooms. And then the cottage, can you just remind, oh, well, the cottage is changed.
Yeah, our next slide is for the duplexes, so we've got eight total units there in four buildings.
And the duplexes are easy, it's three and three, right? Each side?
Correct.
For twenty-four. I have a quick question while you're going on, I'm sorry to interrupt, but are the duplexes, Jamie, considered part of your year-round? No, these would be totally market rate, they're not part of the multi... Okay.
Okay, I think this is the last slide we have for you, I do have some additional information that's not here in the slide chart, but two-hundred-and-two parking spaces total.
Two-hundred-and-two.
And adjacent to the multi-family, we've got forty-six, and then, street parking, fifty, which is pretty close to being adjacent to the multi-family units. We have eighteen spaces at the recreation building.
Can you say that again? What are the fifty spaces? I'm not sure I understand what you mean. There's forty-six spaces around the sort of parking, the basketball court, for forty units, is that right?
Yeah.
Sorry, there's forty-six spaces around the, for the multi-family units?
Which essentially is behind the road.
By the basketball, yeah, and then there's ten other spaces that would be for the duplexes?
I think I owe you an apology, 'cause I don't believe we've thrown, we've put in the duplex parking count here. Now, they will be on-site, like all of the...
Oh, so you're gonna provide us a plan with parking on the site for the duplexes?
Yes.
Okay. And the houses, obviously.
Yes.
Some of the, if we're talking parking, the site plan doesn't seem to accommodate parking on a lot of lots.
We haven't shown, we haven't developed a site plan for the single-family cottages to show the parking.
Well, I think it speaks to the next problem, there's too many of them in too small an area, so I don't think you can get the parking in there, but anyway, we'll get to that.
But there's, just to be clear, there's forty-six spaces for forty units, so there's forty multi-family units, and there's forty-six spaces just for those multi-family.
Plus the street parking, which is fifty, which make, we're really talking about ninety-six spaces.
Well, no, but they're not gonna park on the other side of the duplexes, really, I mean.
Well, anyway, why are we counting those towards that? Why wouldn't those extra spaces be used by me going to visit the single-family house? Why are they counted against the multi-families? Unless it's in a parking lot right next to it, which it's not, I don't understand.
I sort of see that those forty-six spaces that are around the loop are for the forty units that are multi-family, so there's one parking space per unit, essentially.
Essentially.
I hear what you're saying, and our approach has been essentially that the street parking also services the multi-family units.
I mean, I hate to admit that how lazy I am, but God, there's no, you wouldn't want to park on...
It's not laziness.
On the outside of the duplex, to walk to my eight-unit building there, I mean, it's just not gonna happen.
Well, it would happen because you'd have nowhere else to park, but...
It just doesn't seem right.
It doesn't, you, the extra street parking was not meant to be, in my opinion, used for the multi fam, to make the multi-family more comfortable, it was for overflow, it was for I-go-visit, it was, it was not supposed to be occupied and parked in all day, every day. So, anyway, it's...
And where are you talking about, right over here?
Yeah, all those, and I don't even see the duplex parking, you have...
He's saying the duplex is gonna be on-site.
It will be on-site.
How?
I don't know, they have to show us.
So, those, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, so the ten that are in back of the duplexes, those are...
Part of the forty-six.
Those are part of the forty-six for the multi...
That's correct.
That's right. So, that's basically less than one parking space per bedroom. You have ninety-four bedrooms, oh, no, I'm sorry, 'cause that includes the duplexes, and the duplexes were how many?
Twenty-four, so it's seventy bedrooms in the marked multi-family.
And they get forty-six spaces, so not every bedroom gets parking space.
Which is not a hundred percent unusual, but there needs to be more parking dedicated to that. Or, or, you could have few units, fewer units, and those forty-six parking spaces get spread out more. But, are you finished, Chris, or do you have something else?
Well, I have something that's not in your packet, and it's just basically some square footage calculations and also some bedroom dimensions, just generally speaking.
All right, well, go ahead.
Okay, so, I don't know what the best, this could get pretty boring.
Is there a slide, too?
No.
Yeah, let's summarize it, are they adequately-sized bedrooms?
I would say yes, I mean, we've, on the three-bedroom units, the smallest bedroom that we would have, we have allowed is a ten-by-ten bedroom, and then they basically increase in size from that point on, to, you know, ten by thirteen and a half, ten by twelve, ten by twelve, fourteen by twelve, ten-three by eleven-six, eleven-six by ten-three.
When you say ten by ten, by the way, just using that as an example, does that include the closet space? No? Okay.
Absolutely not.
Just wanted to be clear.
Just, also, I tried to make an effort to basically keep, you know, a room that's rectangular and push the, essentially, the closet, integrate the closet along one of those walls of that rectangle, so, I hear what you're saying, and it's not included.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're basically talking about space that's, that can be allocated for furnishing a bedroom.
Okay.
Okay.
You all set, or?
I think so, I, perhaps what we should do is get you the sort of the calculations, the area calculations for the studio, the one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom, I'm sorry that we didn't have it integrated in here, we just put this together today.
Yeah, ultimately, we would need that, I think that, you know, just to cut to the chase, I'm not sure we're on the same page in terms of unit count and what, and bedroom count, so, maybe there'd be more space. Your modules probably aren't gonna change anyway, so, yeah, that would've been a nice bit of information to have, but, I think, does anybody wanna hear from Chris anymore, or should we just go and comment on... I don't wanna get bogged down, let's just put it that way, I'd like to try to let the board speak about what we feel about where we are, not how we got there either, but... All right, you gotta identify yourself for the tape, and I don't, I don't wanna get into this, right now.
For...
Go ahead.
The architect, Campbell Sutton.
Chris?
To the architect here. I just had a quick question, there was, I think it was on the thirty-two-foot buildings, you had a sketch that showed the outdoor space for each of the units, and I wasn't quite sure how those were accessed, I think, it looked like on the front and back, there was like a terrace for the below stairs, okay.
All right, I do not want to get into the specifics right yet about the architecture, okay?
May suffice it to say their access from each unit internally and move on?
Go ahead, answer the question, but I'm just saying, we're not gonna get into that level right now, there's time, but what we, I, what I would prefer to do is give, yeah, continue on the site plan to give the applicant some guidance as to what we might be able to support, unless we're all there now, and then we can talk about the minutia.
Could you clarify that these are ninety-two units with two-hundred-and-eighty bedrooms, is that?
No, I think it's ninety-two units with two-hundred-and-seventy-six bedrooms, is that correct?
I had ninety-four plus one-eighty-six.
See, that's why I asked the question.
It's totally legit!
I had ninety-four bedrooms in the multi-family and the duplexes, and one-eighty-six in the cottages.
I have two-fifty-six.
Is that correct?
I have two-eighty.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, that's right.
Whatever it is, it's too many.
I have two-eighty.
Okay?
We all have different numbers.
I know, we can all do math, do your own math, it's, what are you submitting? What is the number you're submitting in terms of bedroom count right now?
It's on your chart, page...
Seventy plus twenty-four plus one-eighty-six.
Yeah, seventy, twenty-four, and one-eighty-six.
It's two-eighty.
Okay, two-eighty, my bad.
You're asking for two-hundred-and-eighty.
Two-eighty, okay, so the bedroom count is basically the same as we've been looking at. I wanna just start off by saying I appreciate many of the changes, I think the site plan is beginning to have some promise in terms of the streetscape, in terms of breaking up some of the larger buildings. I think the building designs, in terms of the sketch designs that we've seen, show promise, I do think, obviously, there are some issues remaining, and so, I think, to Ed's point of trying to frame this, the question in giving, in ways that might give the developer some guidance as to how they might come up with the next iteration, I think maybe if we can talk in those terms. To me, frontage is a big one, I think the lots should be wider, there's a lot going on here, especially if you're talking about any five-bedroom houses, which, by the way, we've been very consistent in saying we don't like the five-bedroom houses, you've been insistent in keeping them, not only keeping them, but increasing the number, so, there has to be a quid pro quo to even consider them, and that is making the lots bigger, in my opinion. The setbacks, does anybody else have any thoughts on frontage, looking at this particular plan?
Well, I just, I mean, to Jeff's point, I think without seeing how the parking's gonna work on these, it's hard to really understand whether or not they fit.
They can't work.
I don't know, some of these, it doesn't look like it, you'd have to drive over a window well to get into the parking lot, so, it's hard to make that determination without parking shown on the plans, but it looks, it looks awfully tight, and I do agree that you're meeting the minimum lot size that is allowed in Antucket, in town, but why can't you make some of these bigger? And offer a little bit more frontage and giving a little bit more breathing room to the, to the structures.
Well, and, and some of the houses, due to the curvilinear road, some of the lots, as you drive in, for instance, the buildings, at least as drawn, are at the lot line.
Right.
That, that's just not gonna fly, it's putting... That, that's just not going to fly. It's putting, for instance, can, can you pull up the, pull up the slide with the? With the slide? Not with the code. This is problematic for me. Oh, that kind of thing. I don't see how you can possibly park cars in here. Now, if this building is all the way back here, but this is what we're presented with. There's no parking.
Can we use a microphone?
No, it doesn't work, that microphone.
I can.
But it doesn't work.
Well, I don't want to be up here doing the dog and pony show either.
But for the viewers and for the tape, we need it for the record.
Anyway, speaking again to some of the points that Ed brought up, frontage, I think if these lots get wider, all of a sudden, one of these goes away. This situation gets a little better. These look pretty nice. They're nice and wide. Those, to me, look like they're comfortable and appropriate for Nantucket and for this particular project. This, not so much. These, yeah. So again, I think there's promise. I just think that you, we need, we, the board, needs to give the applicant a little more guidance as to where we would like to see some of these things going.
Well, I think one of the things that I was looking at or thinking about was just the, the placement of the buildings around this, the multifamily buildings. Some of them seem very odd, or, or, so.
You mean the, the sort of tucked-in thing over the?
Or this one, like this, hanging out here at this weird angle. Like, with all the different doors, you know, are they going to be passed? What's the landscape plan around this building to get somebody that enters, I don't, I don't know the plan off the top of my head, like here versus, somebody that enters here versus there? And what's it going to look like around those buildings? Because these are very odd relationships. I just don't want it to look.
Let me ask you this, Lisa. Do you think that this plan would be better if you cut these in two, eliminating, so that's five units? Five, two-modular units. Instead, you go to eight? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight? Eight of these little ones.
Yeah, so that's four units per.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think these two just seem, this one in particular seems like it's just like landed from Mars. It doesn't have any sort of relationship. And this being at an angle. So I just think that there could be a little bit more development along here to make it more pleasing architecturally.
Can I speak to that, though, in terms of?
Sure.
The, the buildings essentially kind of following the roadway. And this is actually.
Sorry.
Kind of a design change that we arrived at in working with Cliff Bamer, who felt that it would, actually, the design would be enhanced if the streetscape essentially followed this path here, as opposed to just having the buildings lined up as a property line.
I, I understand that, but the buildings have multiple entrances, so there's no real sense of entry. If it was a townhouse where they both, the front doors face the street, I could totally relate to that. But the fact just that a facade is sort of going along the arc of the street, but the, the house, the houses don't all face that way.
No, that's correct.
Yeah, that's, that's what seemed odd to me, because some do, but not all of them. So you're going to have pathways and things to get people to their front doors and, I think the relationship, I, because I agree with Cliff, that having a sense of houses, you know, facing the street, a sense of entry to all these buildings makes sense. I just don't know with these multifamily buildings where the entrances are happening on multiple different sides, even the duplexes. It's, that's, you know, a little bit different. Because right now, some of the streets, some of the front doors are actually facing into each other on the duplexes, right? If I'm reading your plans right. And I might not be, but.
No, that's, we, there is, there are, there's one side entry on the duplexes.
Right.
One front entry, one side entry.
So I just, you know, it's part of just developing a landscape plan. I don't know if your colored plan shows any paths or anything. No, not really.
No, it, really, the intent of the landscape plan was essentially show the development of this open space here. So that it just wasn't an open green like we had in the original design, and that it basically had different functions as you sort of meander through there. And, and Cliff also felt this is really important, is develop a public space back here on the north side of the lot here.
Right, the basketball court.
Yeah.
I, I think it's just, you know, as, I would rather get a sense of entry, and I know it's counter to having, to not having big buildings with single entrances, but it just seems architecturally unusual at the moment with all these different doors around the buildings that they don't really relate to anything. And maybe with a plan, you can show us, with a landscape plan, you show how it will work. And I stand, and all, you know, stand corrected.
And that's actually included. We've done that with the slideshow.
What page is that on?
It shows on the, the outside space.
I mean, if you're talking, I mean, we've done each individual structure.
No, no, I'm talking about how you get from the parking to all the doors.
That has not been developed.
That's what I want to see, because I just think it's, I want to see how that looks, you know.
I think that's fair.
Do you think the plan would work better, Lisa, if there were fewer buildings, fewer units?
I think the plan, the plan would work better if there are fewer units and, and again, still smaller buildings. And if they were broken up a little bit more, I think it would be easier to kind of have them relate to that, to that streetscape. I mean, that's, that, that's what was nice about the other option that Stephen had drawn as a sketch, was that there were multiple, smaller buildings. You know, you got a little bit of a curvilinear thing going in there. It, it felt more, the buildings really addressed the street.
No, I understand it architecturally.
That was not, this was.
Oh, this was, yes.
From your work group?
That was from the.
That was from the work group.
It's in there, it's in there.
It's in Jackson, right?
Yeah.
It's in Jackson, yeah.
And so I think, you know, still trying to make this multi-unit development feel like it didn't drop out of the sky onto this island where we don't see anything like this. I think that area just needs more development.
Well, and I think one way to develop in a, in a more sensitive manner might be to take those four-module buildings, make them two-module buildings, and get rid of two of the, two of the buildings. So you go from 10 modules to eight modules, and you're able to spread it out more. There's more open space. There's more ability to get parking for each unit. So I, I think there should be some serious consideration given to that. The bedroom count obviously goes down. The parking actually probably goes up. I think it's better in terms of relating to the rest of this development. Again, you've gotten away from the four-module building. Started with much bigger buildings, they've gotten a little smaller. And I, I just don't see it as extremely painful, so.
Maybe there's somewhere in between. Maybe there's a six, a, a three module building.
The other nice thing about going to two mo, the two-module buildings as your default is you get more end units. You don't have those interior units, although most of yours had, they weren't really three modules.
They're not like townhouses, row houses, right?
Yeah.
But I mean, just having something that's more curvilinear, you know, just makes it look that much more in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood. So.
Yeah, I mean, that, the parking ratio becomes better. Everything becomes better. Strain on the water system, the sewer, the, you get more green space, there's less pavement, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I think that if we need to cut to the chase, we need to come up with maybe a number. Is that kosher?
I mean, I, I would, it doesn't make sense to see the parking where you started to talk about. It may knock it down as practical. You don't have to park on the plan.
Well, so we'd have to say, like, we expect at least one and a half times the number of spaces, times the number of bedrooms. 1.5 times the number of bedrooms.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, I think that's fair enough.
So on the frontage, let's, let's talk about the frontage on the lots. Minimum of 60?
I can't, it's hard for me to tell what are, what is this, what are these now?
Those are the wide ones. They're nice.
Well, how big are they?
I'm assuming these are 50s. So you'd have to, I don't know. We don't have dimensions on anything. It makes it frustrating.
Is there a Bracken plan that has some dimensions on it?
I mean, I don't necessarily think you need 60 feet of frontage on every lot, but I think some of these lots, these corner lots are just too, just too tight. Some of them, some of them laid out 50 feet are fine.
I think 50, I'm okay with 50 feet and maybe a couple, if they, you know, like some of these corner, but they're, these are just two, the ones on the, where the wall is curving, they're, they're just teeny.
Well, how many parking spaces are we going to ask for each cottage?
Two?
Two. We were also saying that.
Can they be, you know?
We didn't want them all to be tandem, though.
The other, the other advantage to getting a little more frontage is you get a little more space in between each, each driveway. So therefore, maybe you can get two rather than one, or three, and, you know, extra street parking. There is no additional street parking in the beginning qua, pod of the development. So there's absolutely no overflow parking, right? And I know Lisa doesn't want to walk, so. Yeah, I, I think that, I think there's still, things like parking, frontage, setbacks, the setbacks, I, I think a five feet is an absolute minimum. I think in between two buildings, 10 feet is pretty tight. And I know it happens in town.
I was going to say, you know, follow, I think it's R5, you know, it's like 10 feet on one side and five feet on the other. You got to pick.
You're treating them unequally on the site as well. Lisa's point about not walking. You're having parking that is provided to the market rate units. So with those three, then you're not having enough of the affordable units. It's, it's not acceptable on that.
For the cottages?
For, for the parking.
Can we repeat that in the mic so we can all hear? You, you have to just be reminded, in terms of a site design, they have to treat the 40, the affordable units equally with the market rate. So I assume that the, the distance of parking that you're referring to has to do with the condo buildings.
No, no.
It's both. It's just.
Both.
Like this whole area, George, has no visitor parking. Oh, it has four spaces right here.
So are the affordables mixed in to there?
We don't have that planned.
We don't have that planned in either.
You, you really can't be talking numbers until you get that, and you can't then have all the single-family cottages with easily accessible parking and then.
That's not what it is. The single family, with the, the beginning pod has no overflow extra parking. That, that, to me, is an issue.
Why is, why can't they?
Because they have a lot of buildings in there.
No, but I mean, why can't we, I, yeah, but I mean, like, why can't they have?
Well, you could take the funky corner lot and make it, or, there, there are options.
What about, they can't have on-street parking here?
Yeah.
Well, they'd have to widen that road between them.
Yeah, but I mean, you, I mean, you, you got to give somewhere, like.
Well, that's, I think that's the point. Well, so I think it's, it's, it's getting a plan that shows all the driveways and.
I'm sorry, haven't we asked for that, like?
Well, not in the new design. We had it in the old design, right? I mean, but I think, you know, we can't really speak to the major issues, which are parking, lot sizes, frontage, all that information, all that stuff, until we have a plan that shows where the affordables are and shows all the accurate parking and how it gets designated, I guess. What's?
But I mean, if we say we want that the, the frontage has to be a minimum of 50, and that the setbacks have to be, you know, X in the front, in the back, and then, you know, 10 and 5, or 10 and 10 on the sides, then if that's what we're saying, then they'll have to make that work. And if that means moving, you know, moving the units, the number of units down to make those requirements, then. I feel like that's what you were suggesting, right? Like, if we give them the parameters of this is what would be acceptable to us, like, so for these two lots, they're going to have to figure out, because there's, that's not 50 feet. So either that becomes one lot, or some shaves off to this one, or.
But I think some of these are really tight, though, at 50.
Yeah, I would like to see wider than 50 for.
I don't want to say a minimum of 50. I, I would say that some of them can be 50.
Then they have to make a smaller, then they have to make a smaller house, like.
Well, I think if you're going to do 50 feet of frontage, and then you're going to require 15 feet of setback, 10 on one, although I'd probably be off for 10, 10 on both sides.
We have 10, in Naashop, we have 10 and 5, and you have to pick one. One side is 10, one side is 5. I mean, they, you know, and Naashop has tandem parking in some places, and.
Side by side.
And side by side in others. But it's minimum 50 frontage. So I mean, it can be done. It's tight in there, but there's also, I will say, you know.
Also, I've, in Naashop, you have parking on one side of the street.
That's just going to, that's exactly what I was just going to say. There's parking.
Entire development.
There's a couple of places where you can't, but mostly you can. And it gets used a lot. And in the summer, it's like by the pool and stuff, it's, if you live on.
In the winter, it's, it's, it's full.
Yeah. Not as bad, though, I guess.
Yeah, but I think, though, just, I mean, the, the one difference between this and Naashop, obviously, is that this is going into an area with two-acre zoning, so.
Yeah, no, I agree. I'm just, I'm just trying to think, like, practically on the ground, like, you know.
Can I make a comment that Naashop has dramatically less bedrooms, because there's no full basements with three bedrooms in them?
I mean, there are, there are finished basements in some unit, in some houses. But yeah.
Who said that, please?
Sean. 14 South Shore Road.
Make the comment that Naashop has dramatically less bedrooms because they don't have full basements planned with bedrooms in them.
But Naashop, Naashop does have a five, it's not a 40B, and it does have five-bedroom houses, though, for sure.
And all the lots size are 5,000 square feet.
That's the minimum lot size. Some of them are bigger.
The minimum.
But the minimum, I don't believe.
Actually, I did own one in Naashop that was under 5,000, so I think that the zone, I think it's allowed to be 4,800 and something, like, really. Pretty sure.
No, it's 5,000, but maybe there was some undersized.
Right. Did some of you? Okay.
Wait, hold on.
He basically said that he had a house in Naashop that was under 5,000 square foot.
The lot.
Lot. That the lot was under 5,000 square feet.
That's, that's, that's my thought. Look, it was, it was a long time ago, but I do remember that there was some variation. There's four bedroom.
Where was it? Do you remember?
All right, anyway, we don't have to talk about Naashop too much. It's, um, this, this is slightly different. Jim, you want to say something?
I just, in reviewing the minutes from your second design group, I think the developer mentioned that they need 281 bedrooms to make this work. Is that right? I mean, is this something, can we talk about the number of bedrooms? Does that?
Yeah.
You know, thanks for making that point. And eventually, I was going to get to it, but I think this is kind of where we are, is, from a program standpoint, if there were an easy way to make a reduction for us right now relative to the business plan part of this deal, I think we would do it. I mean, as far as, you know, we talked about the five bedrooms and why that number went up. We talked about, like, the rec building and how I think that's vital to the market and economics of, of our projections for what we'd be able to sell these things for. And so when there's pressure put on one piece of the proposal, any one of these proposals, you know, it's like something else pops out up here. And so in reducing the, look, there's one way for us to, to really reduce the density in the way that I think you guys would like us to do it, and that would be to have more cottages. And that's, for us, that doesn't address the middle-income piece, and that's why we've wanted the condos to be a part of this from the beginning. And so going from our 100-unit plan to this plan, we really liked the, the 100-unit plan, because in our mind, there was 70 units out of the 100, 70% that were going to end up in year-round scenarios. And so for us, that's very meaningful. And so by reducing the condos from 60 to 40 here, we've gone to 52 units out of 92. That would be year-round, assuming that the market rate cottages and market rate duplexes would sell to seasonal people. So that's what the assumption is based on. And that gets us to 56.5% year-round occupancy. And so that year-round occupancy is dropping, and, and it's not ideal. It's not our favorite scenario. But that's, you know, what we were willing to do to get to where we are here today. I think. I think, you know, talking about reducing the frontage and stuff, that's a little bit disheartening to me because what we had was a very kind of linear rectangular plan initially where we did have all 50-foot frontage. And a lot of what we heard and what ultimately we embraced by the town's designer was a more organic site plan, which kind of, by definition, put pressure on the frontages, for example. So, we're trying, we're trying different ways to fit a program that, for us, we have to hit. There's nothing arbitrary about the program and the economics behind it for us to kind of hit a minimum bar, so, anyway.
All right, Jamie, I have a question for you. As you're proposing it, I believe it's roughly 20 bedrooms per acre, is that correct?
I haven't looked at it based on that, but if it's 13 and a half acres and it's 280 bedrooms as it is- Yeah, it's just over 20.
270, it's over 20 bedrooms per acre. Rugged Scott was 14, Satchum's was 10. So this is double.
What's Tacoma?
Tacoma's a totally different issue. It, number one, it was his own workforce housing. Number two, it's rental. They all count against the shy.
I know, but-
It's a totally different animal.
But it's not totally different because this is, you know, 50, 56.5% intended for year-round with restrictions. Previously, 100, that's 70%, so I don't think we can say that this is a totally different animal than Tacoma, or at least we can't say it's the same as Beach Plum Village. Because that's 20, that's the minimum, 25%.
Well, it's not, it's definitely not the same as Beach Plum Village because that was 14 per acre. This is 42% greater than Beach Plum Village.
And Beach Plum Village only has 25% year-round housing.
Well, you're, it's 25% affordable.
Yeah.
Which is affordable in the year-round, those are two different, those are two different animals.
The only units that count against the shy are the 80%.
Yes, there's the distinction of the shy, which is the 25% at 80 AMI. And then, there's the market rate condos, which we're proposing to put a restriction on to year-round folks.
Right, and I understand that, I just, you know, I think that that's a, and I know that's intended and you hope to put a restriction on it, but I don't see, I mean, I love the feeling behind it, I'm just not sure how, you know, enforceable it's gonna be and how. So I'm looking at that, but also, like, I'd rather see if you were gonna do that than do a bunch of duplexes where you do that. I just, I don't know how that's going to shake out.
So I just wanna go back to my question about the number of units. And I'm thinking out loud here, so maybe, and I don't wanna get into the economics, obviously, but to me, if you reduce the number of bedrooms or the units, then you would make it up with the price. And I know you're focused on this year-round thing, which to me is, I don't know if it's a red herring, but you either have affordable or not affordable. So if you put seven houses on there, would you make more money, I guess? And you're saying this is kind of your cap for number of bedrooms?
Yeah, I mean, look, the condos that we're creating here, it's not a red herring, there's-
No, I don't mean, I just mean the year-round, like, why not just market?
And that's what I'm addressing.
Okay.
But that product was designed specifically to a price point. And that price point's 450 to 750.
Okay.
And that does not really exist on, yes, there are units that come up in the 650 range, they need a lot of work, and they're on the market for a short period of time. But this is like, if we want to create an ownership product on this island that's gonna help our, you know, year-round population wanna stay here for their career, it's not by, you know, writing a $3,000 check every month for their entire career. So for us, we wanted to create an ownership product that hit that price point that our year-round professionals could afford. And so, you're right, if we reduce, there's a lot of things that we could do here. And we could sell these condos for a lot more than we're talking about, if we were gonna sell them to seasonal people. It's not what we wanna do.
I have a question specific to the, I don't even know if I can ask this question, but you're talking about the economics to some degree. I mean, are you, are the, is this some sort of loss leader? Are you giving the condos away at cost? I don't mean that as a joke. Or are, is it for profit?
It's for profit, but it's also at risk. So when we say that we're gonna sell these at the price point that we said that we would sell them for and that we would not increase or decrease the price by more than 10%, there's risk in that for us. And so, of course, there's, yeah, I'm not, we're not doing this, we're not a nonprofit, we're not using taxpayer dollars for this.
All right, we'll go to the audience. Somebody's out there, hand up longer than you fall, but I'll come back to you. I know you're, go ahead, we'll go to the young lady in the back.
Joan Stockman, thank you for calling me young, 13 Werowero Lane.
You have to speak up.
I have to speak up, thank you for calling me young, that's number one. Joan Stockman, 13 Werowero Lane. Couple of things, I have a question that came up, I believe at the design workshop, which I got the information second and third hand. So have, has anybody determined definitively if it is legal to restrict the, what they're calling the middle-income year-round houses? So that's number one, is that even legal, is this something that can happen? Question number two, who decides what's year-round? Like, if you're super lucky and you get to leave for a month, maybe you leave for two months, what if you leave for two months and a day? Like, who's making that decision? Who's overseeing all this stuff? So that's number three, and this is a question that we've had consistently about this. You know, in terms of the giveaway, when I did the math, the price per square foot for the condos was astronomical. You know, it was 1,100, 1,200, 1,300, 1,400 dollars per square foot. So if we're looking at the reasoning here, I have to question that. I have to ask if that's a huge part of the motivating forces here because we don't even know if they can do that for year-round people. Thank you.
Thank you, I wanna address the first question, not address it, but ask the question. You, at the last meeting, Josh mentioned a letter from, I'm gonna get this wrong, Croquetis and Bluestein? Do we have that?
We do not have that at this moment, but we did say, and we had said that repeatedly, and we definitely want to submit something to you between now and the final hearing. We have reviewed it, vetted it very thoroughly, and I don't mind saying, you know, we know that it's a question that's been out there, and we were just trying to be careful in refining what we thought made sense, what we think makes sense, and got a little bit behind the eight ball because of all the design things, which, you know, have had some positive results. But yes, we have already had analysis by that firm because they, among other things, are experts in fair housing laws. And they are comfortable, and we are comfortable, that what we're proposing basically should pass muster. I don't mind saying that because fair housing laws and interpretations and case law, it's not the type of thing where you can say 100%, this is absolutely okay, nobody could ever question it. Theoretically, somebody could question it, but certainly, we are comfortable with what we'll propose to you very soon with the specifics, which is basically a refinement of the bulleted submission that we did, I think, at least a couple of months ago. So we will refine that, and we have reviewed it by that, we have had that firm review it, and we are comfortable, along with they are, that, you know, it is perfectly fine to propose and should be acceptable under the law. Again, it's not like there's an opinion that says, yes, you've received every type of permit you need or something like that. So, yeah, we will have that very soon.
I just wanna make a comment about, when I said red herring, I didn't mean it in a pejorative way. I just, this whole year-round thing I have a problem with, too, so I choose not to really think of things that way. But I like the, you know, the mid-level, whatever the way you describe it, which is really just a marketing thing.
Which doesn't exist in an ownership, you know, firm.
Yeah, and I applaud you for that. I'm just trying to figure out a way to get to less units without.
Okay, Ed, did you wanna speak about the cottage?
Yes, the additional discussion, I'm familiar with that, for Bluestein, they're one of the leaders in affordable housing in terms of law firms. We also ask that, once you have that decision, that it be presented to DHCD and to see what feedback, if any, you can get from DHCD on that decision, on that opinion.
I mean-
And town council should review it.
Absolutely. I'm sorry, but it seems, if you're making the case that this year-round piece is critical to the whole puzzle or your goal, why don't we have this letter? I don't understand it, quite frankly, we've been asking for it for months. And what if the letter, what if you don't get, what if the opinion is such or not, it's not valid, if you will? We've been wasting all our time. Then your plan would have to totally shift. You would go away from the year-round aspect.
So we have enough feedback, obviously, to feel comfortable continuing down this path with you. And you will have the letter before you're asked to make a decision.
Well, but we're trying to get to a place based on your desire or your stated desire to provide middle-income, mid-level, whatever you wanna call it, year-round housing, but we have, we have asked repeatedly, and I'm not talking about at the work group, this has been going on for months, to show us that that plan, that basic plan, is kosher. And we don't have anything, so why, how can we, how can we just take you at your word that you're comfortable with? Obviously, you're comfortable with it because that's how you're going forward. But, and I'm not saying we wouldn't be comfortable.
Understood, but as I said, it's not just us, it's with the benefit of the review by that firm. And I already said apology that, you know, we wished on our own that we had it sooner to you. But we are still saying what we're saying, what Jamie's saying about the program because we have reviewed it with them and it is kosher, to use your word. And so, it'll be reviewed, you can discuss it, obviously, we'll share it with George. And, you know, that's where we're at, so, you know, it doesn't change our view of the legitimacy of the program. So we'll get it to you, and it doesn't change your demean from the benefit of the workshops and the discussion that we're taking, that we're having today.
I guess, but-
May I just say one quick thing or question, really? And this is, you know, sincerely meant as a question to you, Mr. Chairman, from what you said, trying to tie your question or concern about the number of bedrooms to what Mr. Pucci said above, I'm sorry, what Ed Marchand said at the introduction this evening, about it's not just density that doesn't cut it, you have to tie it to some impact. And then he went through some factors, which you have very rationally discussed. We're gonna see what we can do. But I tie that question on the number of bedrooms or your concern about the number of bedrooms to that same type of standard. And, you know, just to inform me, so we can think about it and respond, what is it about the number of bedrooms, other than the factors that we've been through? The frontage, the parking demands, those types of things? What is it about the number itself, is there something I'm missing that, you know, concerns you just by the number itself standing in a vacuum?
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
I'm concerned about the number of bedrooms because I feel like it will overtax, overstress what this site can handle as far as cars and people and using the one pool and overflow, there is state parking, overflow parking.
Traffic.
The traffic. Where, you know, I saw the basketball court, but I don't see any playground structure or anything for the children who live. You know, you, there's 280 bedrooms, you've got five-bedroom homes, three-bedroom, how many three-bedroom condos, two-bedroom condos? You've got 10 of each of those. You know, if someone's buying a three-bedroom condo, you would think they'd at least have one child. You know, I just, I think that this is still really just putting the very maximum on this property without really, I mean, you know, the driveways and all that other thing. So the number of bedrooms really informs all the rest of it, at least for us. And we have to find something to hold on to because it seems to me, you know, we're asking for this letter or we, where are the driveways, or where's the landscaping, where's the mail, blah, blah, blah. And it's very slow in coming, and yet, the deadline is creeping up on us. And I feel like I would love to make a decision. I would love to say to you guys, look, here's a one for frontage, here's what you want for setbacks, X, Y, Z, but we don't have enough information to do that. And I don't understand why, at this point, we still don't have enough information to do that. Is it cost to get more plans? Like, it just doesn't make sense to me.
I can speak to that. I mean, we have a highly-developed 100-unit version of this plan.
Where is it?
You've seen it. Okay, you've seen it. And so then, we decided, we decided back in late January that we weren't finding common ground and that bringing in a recommended designer on behalf of the town might be helpful. So that's where we've spent the last month and a half. And we have basically, I thought, embraced the preferred design that came from that effort as well as we could within our parameters.
But I think even if that's true, Jamie, then, but we still need to, like, even if the overall picture is, I'm not gonna get very much, even if this overall picture is looking better, and I'm just speaking for myself, not for the rest of the board, we still need to see, like, I may be like, okay, I can get there on this, I'm not saying I can, but I still would need to see the driveways and, like Lisa said, like, how are people getting into these condos and all of that other information.
And if you guys said, we like this plan, we wanna, we could get behind this plan, we would submit all of that to you.
But we can't get that, it's hard to get behind that plan without that information.
Yeah, so we're just in a chicken and an egg.
Yeah, because I think we have to see that. Like, I just noticed that from even the plan that we had at Chris, at the last, the Boomer meeting, there were five houses on that one stretch of road, and now there's, excuse me, yeah, five, and now there's six. And then, and across the way, there's six.
There were three here.
Right.
And now there are four, and so they-
You're adding, you're making some of the lots that had been presented on this original plan from, I don't know what date, the February 22nd, the meeting before that, you've actually added single-family units.
And reduced a lot of the larger buildings that you guys didn't wanna see at the same time. So, like I said, I mean, it's like, you know, it's like when you push here or something.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, but also, but on the flip side, when we say, still something has to give. Like, you just, just because you take away one doesn't mean we push on the other. So, like, before, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 lots, like, might have been okay, but now that this bottom one's divided, it looks a lot smaller, so.
Yeah, what we'd like to do is push without the pop.
Yeah.
If we can't get there, we can't get there.
I think it, like, just, I don't know how you would address this. So if you have 70 bedrooms in the multifamily buildings, I'd wanna see at least, I mean, 70 would be an absolute minimum of parking over there, but I would say you'd wanna have 100 spaces.
Yeah, the way we did think about that with Bracken was that everybody would have an assigned spot in the parking lot, every unit, out of the 40 units, there's 46. But that we have 96 spaces between, inside the condominium area and then the off-street. So there would be some walking as part of this design. There's room for more parking on this plan. I mean, we actually backed some parking out because we thought it was a better plan. So it's not, it doesn't, we can add parking back in. And we could address a lot of the things that you're asking about on this specific plan, you know, as part of another submission, if, you know, if that's gonna help you come to an informed decision on this particular plan. And I just wanted to go back real quickly to Joan's comment, which was, I think, part one. And, you know, those numbers, so just between the three-bedroom condos, you're looking at square footages of 1,162 to 1,368, and we're selling them for 750,000. And every fourth one is gonna be an affordable unit and sold way below hand. So I guess I'm just having trouble with your math, you were saying over 1,000? And then, the two-bed, well, because at $1,000 a square foot, that'd be 1.3 million for every unit.
Could I interrupt you?
Please.
She may have been looking at the original Pell application, and in that application, the square footages were very small for those units. I think they've increased. I think the square footages-
I think the square footages, based upon what Jamie just said, have increased.
I didn't base those numbers on the original Pell, I based them on later submissions. But because the submissions tend to be incomplete, it's really hard to keep current. So I'll redo them.
Do we, do we care about the cost per square foot? No.
I do, uh-
Don't get into the back and forth.
Can we, can we talk about, though, if, so what Jamie's saying that he would want, could we talk about what we want to do for, like, go back to our discussion of frontage, setbacks, road width, sidewalk, the things that Ed said, so that, because maybe, I guess then, if, if what you're saying is you can provide that, then why don't we give him the information that we want? We're currently getting carte blanche now to say what would be acceptable to us, and then it'll be on them to make a plan that can fit that if they can.
And it's sort of a catch-22 with the parking, because, you know, I do think every unit should have adequate parking, but to the same extent, I'd like some green space. So I don't want you to just cram a bunch of parking in here and not have any green space.
Well, if you needed less parking.
Right, if you had less density, or less, less units, then you might, you know, there might be a happy meeting point between that, so, you know, I-
And that goes back to what I, the reason why I brought up the bedrooms is because Mr. Posner, in that meeting, stated a specific number that he needed to make this thing work. That's all. So it sounds like, and this, this is from the meeting minutes, the 186 beds.
Yeah, I don't think, just to be, to clarify what I think you just said, he didn't, he didn't have a specific number, didn't mind. I think he asked if you guys had a specific number, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. That's probably close. Go ahead.
Let me just-
He's gonna call, it's in the minutes.
It's in the minutes.
All right, Sean Perry, 14 South Shore Road again. This is directly related.
Let him finish.
Welsh indicated, presented a plan to increase the duplexes, resulting in 188 bedrooms total. That's less than the 280 Mr. Posner said he needs.
Right. It says it in the minute, Mr. Welsh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm referring to the 280. And is that what we're hearing? We can't go less, or we can't go less buildings, or whatever, however you want to matter.
We could talk forever about this.
Yeah.
The board just has to say, "What is it that you want?"
I agree.
They have to see if they can comply with it.
Because we're getting to the point where we don't seem to make any progress. Josh, is it, were we talking specifically about that point?
I'm talking road.
Road.
About the road.
Does this-
Go ahead.
Yeah, actually, at design review, the road going, the North Road, going to the condos, that was gonna be, maybe it was suggested it was two-way, and Jamie, you thought that was a good idea? Is it, it doesn't appear to be two-way now. Is that correct? I'm just correct.
It's not two-way, I'm just-
Okay, thank you.
Inside the condo, I think.
No.
No, actually, from the entrance.
Yeah, one-way, so she didn't have to drive all the way around.
Yeah. The one o'clock in the morning, I had to go get a beer, and the quickest way out was to go down the one-way road.
Where are you going? Yeah.
So I think the way the flow works here, is it, is it comes in one-way, and it's two-way to here. So you can go in one-way, back around, and then if you wanted to cut out that way, you could do it, rather than driving all the way around. Or you could drive all the way around, so.
Okay, but that's another parameter that we can give some further guidance to. I mean, I think that's, that's certainly one way we can get to the, none of the problem. So.
Yeah, it's hard to tell on this plan, was it two-way? One-way, they all look like one-way streets.
Paul, did you, you add your hand up, did you want to say something?
Yes, at several points, he's mentioned the economics of this project. At several points, he's, he's talked about how the economics don't work for him, and in the minutes of the workshops, has continued reference to the economics of the project. Where he keeps putting in economics as a limiting factor. I think you should ask to see what those economics are, and get the financial data to verify what he's actually talking about.
Thank you. Are we able to get the financial, or ask, we can ask for anything, I know that.
You can ask for anything. I, I don't believe so at this point, because we're not talking about, you know, a condition, or a denial of a waiver, and then they're answering. But, but Paul makes a good point that I wanted to, it's not exactly the same point, but it, and it goes to this issue that Jim had mentioned about a red herring. And, and he didn't mean that in a pejorative sense, but where the, it is sort of a red herring about the issue of the, of the year-round housing. Because they're, they're an eligible applicant, because they're talking about affordable housing, that qualifies under the shy for this project. The fact that a particular design, from their standpoint, requires a certain amount of bedrooms for year-round housing, that isn't subject to 40B, isn't relevant to your design concerns. So while I don't think you're at the point where you can demand a pro forma or ex-project economics, the developer is not making a compelling argument about why they need the year-round housing. And this aside from the issue of the legality of it, which has to be passed upon, or the town, its local, you know, if there's comments that support that type of housing. But that doesn't give them jurisdiction to come in before you and seek, you know, relaxation of your zoning, and to have a site that, you know, that may over, to have a number of bedrooms that may overburden that site. So, you know, we are getting into, into the area that I need to distinguish for you, that's not really relevant for you. When you're telling them about what design issues you want to see addressed in this plan, they can't come back and say, you know, "Well, that doesn't meet our year-round housing concern." Because that's not really a reason that they're an eligible developer before you.
Yeah, if somehow we had precluded them from providing 25% affordable units, that would be a different issue.
Right.
Right. So that's how I feel.
Or, or Ed, if you're, if you're imposing conditions that, then they, they do say, "No, that renders the project econo, uneconomic." But that's not what they're saying with the year-round housing, nor can they say it. They're just saying, "We had intended to be a component of our project, this year-round housing concept." But that doesn't put it within your jurisdiction.
Right. So, yeah, I hear you. So, what do we, what does the board want to do?
More comments.
More comments on, on that specific issue, I hope? Who's gonna talk?
Hi, I have a question for, about the plan. Linda Durensis, Five Gladlands. In the cottages, or houses, or whatever you want to call them, originally, you had talked about that each one would have sheds behind them, and that some were gonna have spas. So they're, in those drawings, it's gonna be even tighter, because once we put a driveway in, a shed in, and a spa in, that's really, really gonna be cramped, because they just right now have a house. So are you still planning on doing the sheds and the spas and the cottages?
Sheds are shown.
I didn't see, I'm sorry.
Forty-four cottages.
Forty-four?
Forty-four.
And how many bedrooms are there?
Uh, 186.
Do you want to respond to that? Sorry.
Yeah, so on this plan, it does show sheds, and-
It's hard to discern.
And we had, we had submitted a couple example landscape plans back when it was the 100-unit design, and again, certainly if, if, you know, you guys said, "We love this plan, let's keep developing and show kind of the minutia," then of course, we'd be happy to do that. As we have with the 100-acre, or excuse me, the 100, the 100-unit plan.
All right, keeping George's comment in mind, that we're not really, you know, the year-round thing is not the driving force necessarily for us, unless we, as a board, feel like there should be some extra weight given to it. How do we want to proceed? I mean, I, I think we can, again, give them some parameters that we can get behind, and it ultimately would be conditioned, conditions, or we can talk about this in a circle for another few-
You know, I appreciate the developer's attempt to create more affordable housing. I'm not sure the neighborhood does, I'm not sure the site supports the kind of units that the developer's talking about, and I'm not, I'm just not sure that, you know, this may not sound very good, but I'm not sure that it's our responsibility to solve the island's affordable housing on one piece of real estate in one neighborhood.
Yes.
I also, Jeff, I agree with you 100%, on appreciating it, but it interests me that there's been almost no public support for that, even that portion of it. If there were, if there was a hue and cry from the town, that, you know, that everybody wanted this, and that selectmen wanted it, and, I don't know, I-
It might be a different issue.
You know, I'm kind of glad you brought that up, actually. Because I will say that the opposition created an incredibly toxic environment, early on in this application.
Well, don't laugh, just, just be respectful.
Where there was, where there was an incredible amount of personal attacks going on, social media, misinformation on social media. If you don't want to stick your head out on this, and I've had a lot of people ask me, they said, "I had somebody in town today that's moving here, that said, 'Let me come,'" and I go, "You know, I don't think that's how you want to spend your time." And a lot of the people that desperately need housing here, Richmond's got a list of 600 people for their apartments that aren't built yet. They have landlords. You know, I think there's a lot of reasons for that. And, you know, I, I do wish that there were more public, or more of a will, or, you know, more people willing to speak out on the issue, because the issue is there, we all know the issue is here. And we all know people that have had to move off island. And we can pretend it's not there, we don't have to talk about it, but Josh and I are. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Again, I, go ahead.
Jamie, I understand, and I appreciate your position, I just, you know, you're in a tough spot here.
Go ahead.
I'm attorney Jim Timmons, my office is in Quincy, and I represent the Cabral family that are right across the street from the project on South Shore Road. I've been following along for quite some time, pardon. I feel like things have got a little bit unnecessarily skewed here, because the board's working very hard to come up with something, and I don't understand why you don't just take what's up on that wall, and walk around the design, and say, "This doesn't fit, this doesn't fit, this doesn't fit," and see what you're left with. The problem here is, we started at 156, and now we're trying to get down, but we're not looking at reasons why we're trying to get down. If you look at that plan, which is a plan that the developer claims works for the site, you've got two dead-end streets, you have roads that we don't know how wide they are, I can tell you that the state fire code says that the one-way roads, the one-ways have to be at least 20 feet, without parking on either side. Well, I would like to see the board, which you're an adjudicatory body, you have no obligation to tell them what, what you want. You have an obligation to work with them, but this has gone further than that, I feel. And I thought that the comments of Ms. McCarthy, I hope every word she said makes it into the minutes. Because what she was saying is, "We want to vote on something, but you need to give us information." I have no idea why we haven't heard from Nantucket Fire yet, but if your fire chief looks at that plan, it's gonna get skewered, and that's gonna give you some direction to make a decision. This has to be an internally safe site, and right now, what I'm looking at is not. Plus, to the extent the board's looking at it, you don't even know how wide the roadways are there. And they're not, for the most part, streets, because in several areas, they're essentially parking lots, with parking lot pathways down the middle. So I know the board has worked very hard, but tonight, you could just walk right around that plan and say, "This is how many units work," based on that. I know that the developer has numbers they have in mind about what they'd like to make on the site, and then they cloak themselves in this 40B cause for affordable housing. Well, the comment made by one of the members, I can't read your plate name, but, yeah, "We're not gonna solve the 40B issues on the island, on this lot, and nor should we. And the neighbors, the abutters on South Shore Road, should not be burdened with the 40B issues that Nantucket Island is facing." I've represented some folks on fairgrounds, and this part of the island is really getting walloped by housing, because of its location, and the fact it's on bus lines, and it's got access to the downtown and whatnot. But the problem is, when you take a small, relatively small lot like this and salvage it in the name of 40B, it's very unfair to the people who live in that area, and it's one of the reasons why the traffic doesn't flow.
I think we've heard this from the very beginning, that we need, and I appreciate your thought about going to the point, or talking about the specific plan, but talking about 40B in general is not helpful at this point in the proceedings.
Well, well-
It's not helpful, so don't, please.
Understood. But I'm just trying to emphasize to the board that there are impacts on the abutters, that's all I'm saying, in this neighborhood.
We appreciate that.
All right. Well, I didn't mean to go too far, Phil.
So, how does the board feel? I mean, should we give some basic guidelines? Do you want to stand up in the plan, say what works, doesn't work? We've been doing this a long time. I still feel like we're fairly far apart. I like George's commentary on the whole year-round thing. Jess, I think it gives a perspective on that issue. Maybe, again, if you wanted to restrict them all to income level, affordable, true affordability, so, but that's not what it's for us. So let's, let's talk about the-
And I don't, and just to, I mean, and I'm not, I'm just, in Jamie's defense, that's not the only issue here, it's not just, it's just not restricted housing. There's people that make over what you can qualify for.
It's a very difficult problem, I will.
So I, I do, you know, like Jeff, I appreciate the goal, I just think that the, unfortunately, the debt, the number of units in here, the number of bedrooms, the number of people, is, and I personally don't like the larger buildings. I think they feel inappropriate in, on Nantucket in general, but also certainly in this area. So, you know, in terms of the plan, I do, I appreciate the, the distance that the plan has come. I think the addition of this, of that other loop road with the, what will be bigger buildings back there is better, but I think I, you know, tried to break that up a little bit more into smaller units. Maybe there's five-unit buildings, six, and also the sense of entry and how they relate to the street. Because I sort of feel like if you took Chris's plan of the exterior spaces on the two gambrels, and you kind of laid them in here, it would looks, I, I just think it would not look very planned. It would be like all these hedges and little terraces, and the buildings would just end up kind of crashing into each other. So maybe just, you know, working on that loop area, to me, would be important. And, you know, we have to see driveways, we have to understand road width, what's one-way, what's two-way, it's really hard to tell. All the information that we got of the developed plan, I don't see how we can give a lot of feedback beyond-
Well, I, I agree with you.
I don't know what specifics to give. I mean, I'm into, I'm, I, I would like a lot, more of the lots to have more frontage. I feel like these two stretches right at the beginning are very dense.
At this point, you've got to have several times to basically design this project for this year.
We're not designing, we're just-
We're not, we're just giving- We're just giving feedback.
We're just trying to get somewhere, Paul, so.
You've already said numerous times that you don't have enough information. If you, there's no obligation on you to give him what you're being asked to do, namely, give him what to do to make this project work. Your function is to look at an application and either grant it or deny it. If you don't have the information, if he hasn't supplied you with what you need to make decisions, then all you're doing is creating an endless circle where they go do some work, you look at it, when you now have the details, you see that that doesn't work or it does work. It's just a waste of everybody's time. Perhaps the way to do this is to first get the information you need, then evaluate that information.
Well, in fairness to them, I think they're trying to develop a schematic of a site plan and then get the information that they need to get to inform us of whether or not it works.
I got it.
Thank you again, Peter Freeman. Just to try to, you know, close this loop because, you know, we do hear you and I understand and there's absolutely no question that our expectation, I stated it in my letter to you when I called it a status memo, we had hoped that we would reach more of a consensus on something just about what we had, what they described tonight. I'm not sure of the exact impact of all of your comments. It's probably not as close as we would like and maybe it's too far apart for either the board or us, but certainly, again, it was our intention and we will. What my client will do between now and the next hearing is take to heart what you said, see what kinds of changes we can make to try to respond to your concerns. Maybe it won't be enough to reduce the number of units or the number of bedrooms or meet every land use design concern that you raised, but we know that you need to have those actual dimension, excuse me, dimensions and details in the parking and the things that have been discussed. So we will do it and put our best foot forward for what we believe will be, at that point, a specific unit count, specific design that will give you the information that we would ask you to approve. And again, if it's too far apart, then so be it. But, and I'm not trying to be Mr. Goody Two Shoes, I really don't know how close we can get to achieving everything that you've said, but we understand that that's where we're at, we need to do it and, you know, so there's no disagreement on my part as to what you're saying to bring closure here. Thanks.
Thank you. Ed, did you want to speak?
Just to add, 40Bs are always negotiated. Controversial 40Bs, and certainly we consider this a controversial 40B, entail more negotiations than others. If this were senior housing, we would have ended this a long time ago. So it's certainly within your role. They presented what they'd like to do. Now you've told them. I think you've given them direction in terms of frontage. You've given them direction in terms of parking. You've given them direction in terms of setbacks. You've given them direction or stated that as laudable as it is to provide an additional tier of housing or additional tier of affordability without having affordable income limits, which weakens that argument, you've given them a sense of how you value that. And I think you've stated that doesn't trump the need for good design or functional design. So I think that's reasonable. I think Peter Freeman has said his client's going to take another shot, take another look at it, and I think you've made progress tonight.
Can I, can I ask for, would it make sense to have this new site plan, once you come up with your, what you think is the right site plan evaluated by the fire chief and all those people before they come to the next meeting so we know it's, it meets those requirements?
The engineer's not going to design a roadway system that isn't going to pass the fire department.
No, I think Mr. Bracken, very familiar with Nantucket. He's familiar with code requirements and he's familiar with local interpretations here in Nantucket. I would not worry about that.
Yeah, I will say, to that point, I would be disappointed if at some point the tongue, which Cliff came up with and which came out of the design review, turns out to be unworkable from an engineering standpoint in the fire.
Yeah, Ryan Maxwell, Bracken Engineering. We'll certainly come up with or finalize a design that meets the fire department's specs.
And it'll be, will it be similar to this?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So that's close.
Yeah.
Just want to be clear.
It's my understanding and Don's away, but he did change the end of that for a bigger radius for the fire truck, is my understanding, so.
I just don't want it to come back and say, well, you told us to do the tongue, even if it didn't work.
Do we call it something different than the tongue?
That was not my name.
What about the little?
And for him, what did we say about parking?
Yeah, I don't necessarily agree with Ed. I usually do, but I don't necessarily agree that we've sort of stated all our parameters. So why don't we go through?
Well, if I can comment on that.
Go ahead.
I mean, just based on Sajem's path and we've had a few 40Bs, I think it's got to be, if we put a ratio to it, it's got to be at least one per unit. And if I had my way, one per bedroom because almost every bedroom's going to have a car. Ed, I know, you know, that might be a big ask, but, you know, that's where I am.
Yeah, I think, I don't think the minimum is one per unit.
That's too little.
Yeah, I think it may be somewhere between one per unit and, so let's talk about that, right? And what do we think the ratio is? Because it does, will inform.
Are we talking differently between the multifamilies and the cottages? Because cottages will have two.
It sounds like you're going to address parking with the management company that's going to be there all the time, which we don't have some of these other projects, which is good. So.
And they're supposed to be parking for the duplexes on the site, which we need to see.
Well, are we, so by code, you need two per, for the house? Or you need one?
Well, no, in town you need one, but usually I think it's, I think town's the only area that you need one per house.
Two, okay.
If you're going to go R5 zoning, you might want to go that.
Was there a waiver?
Which is what?
Did they ask for a waiver on this?
Which is one per dwelling.
Well, we're not going with that zoning.
And duplexes is per bedroom.
No. A duplex is per bedroom. All right. So I think at a minimum, you're talking two per unit, two per single-family home. That would be six per duplex as they're drawn now. And the totals don't matter yet. And then.
I think two per condo and just one for the studio maybe, or two per condo. If it's a studio, you could have a couple living in there.
Yeah.
You know, you have to. I'm going to have you do two per condo.
Two per condo?
Yeah.
Okay. So that checks the box on parking.
Two per unit.
So duplex is one parking space per bedroom because that's what it is for duplex. Two for the single-family and two per condo.
And then do we want to have extra spaces on the roadway?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They have to. They're going to, because the two per, two per single-family dwelling and two per condo unit is not going to cover it, but it will be a good minimum starting point.
So that's 180.
I know Lisa wants, doesn't want to walk, but I'm okay.
I'm okay with walking.
Some of that parking is on the tongue. Sorry, Joe.
But I also want to be careful about having so much parking that you lose the green space.
I hear you.
But like, there's a cost to give.
Right. There is a push and a pull, but we can always say, you can, you know, if we get to a point that is reasonable in terms of all the design, we can always say, oh, we don't like that. Go ahead.
That's 192, not including anything on the, on the street.
But that's what we have to do is see, this is what we're looking for.
Well, it's not 192 because the unit number, I know, is going to change. I do.
Okay.
Go ahead. Do you want to speak about the parking?
About the parking, yes.
Excellent. All right, I'm going to hand this mic over to you. But real quick question, I think we're actually there on what you guys just described as far as if you, if you add up the parking with extra. And so the real question is, how much extra do you want to save?
But you only have 202 parking. You're not there.
Well, he thinks, but let's, let's just say, they're saying what we want and then they're going to have to, like, we got to move forward.
I was just asking more about the want.
Yeah, that was a fair question. We're going to come back to it.
Okay, thank you. Mickey Perry, 14 South Shore Road. Just humor me here, if you will, because I don't read plans well. These parking spaces are going to be hard surface?
Yes.
So just as a layperson, it sounds like, as Lisa said, you're taking green space away to have this hardscape, which has runoff and all those other pollutants. So just please keep that in mind as you're trying to find common ground here. I think it's important.
Totally.
All right. Dave?
Four favors or shells.
Yeah, there are options.
Dave Iverson, Falcon Drive. I applaud the more parking and as you drive around the, you drive around the island, you see everyone lacks parking. And one for bedroom for the duplexes should be the same for the condos. I mean, we have to, we have to accept that people now that are coming here and working or living, are living intergenerationally and there is never enough parking. And I hate giving up green space for it, but if there's not enough parking, where are they going to park?
Thank you.
Ed, just one question. We didn't have plating board representation on, for the design review.
Yeah, I'm sure, but way back, way back in the day.
I assume that he's in the audience.
No, no, in February.
And Stephen.
At the workshop, were you representing?
Parking is and remains a big concern. Even while, parking is a primary concern. The densities that you're discussing seem appropriate.
The densities that you've discussed, one per bedroom, per duplex and one per bedroom, per condo. One per bedroom, per dwelling is very light and I think as Mr. Iverson said, people are going to park somewhere. There's not, the problem I would suggest with this site with respect to parking is that there's no place else to do overflow parking. You're not in a neighborhood where you might be able to park or if you drive by fairgrounds, two fairgrounds, you'll see it, or the public schools where people will actually park there overnight from adjacent neighborhoods. So this is a very isolated location in that regard, kind of cut off from the rest. So parking is going to be an incredibly important aspect, as you're well aware.
Ed?
Absolutely.
Another option that is built into the bylaw for apartment buildings is .75 per bedroom.
.75.
There's one per bedroom in some districts and .75 per bedroom in other, but it's an option.
That makes sense to me for the condos.
So on a three-bedroom condo, you would have.
And you have to round up?
To 5.
Do you round up or round down, Eleanor? Round up or round down?
You round up.
So a three-bedroom condo would be three apartment spaces, three parking spaces. A studio would be one.
You always round, no, you round up and take over 205.
If it's .5, then you.
Oh.
Then it would be one.
Well.
All right, Tucker.
Like, there was a simple comparison drawn to six fairgrounds or six, six fairgrounds, it was one per bedroom.
One per bedroom at Tacoma Way or whatever it was called? Tacoma Green?
One per bedroom, there are 80, 80 places on-site with the requirement that the additional places were provided, provided adjacently on the street.
I do feel that some of the spaces, if we're going to one per bedroom, they can be out on the road and people, you can walk. That's what you were saying, Jim, earlier?
Yeah. But my other point about setting this is kind of maybe the tail wagging the dog, but maybe we reduce the number of units to accommodate instead of building bigger parking lots.
That's where we're hopeful. And therefore, why don't we make the frontage 100 feet?
It works.
That's a lot of problems. Let's talk about frontage. I think, I think it certainly should be more than 50. Unless you come back, well, forget unless, I think it should be more than 50. In an area where it's two-acre zoning.
What is the frontage requirement out there?
No idea.
What did you say?
What's the frontage in two-acre zoning?
I can put in two seconds.
And two-acre zoning is 150 feet.
I was kidding about the 100, but I certainly think 60 is reasonable. You're going to see a lot of those five, those, the fives become fours.
I think if it's current, if the minimum's 50 in the current, and what's allowed there now would be, what did you say?
150.
160?
150.
60 is reasonable. It's less than half.
Okay.
I was going to say 50, but given that amount, 60 sounds good.
Does the board agree with that?
60 feet.
Frontage, minimum frontage.
Yeah, and all this is in the context of this plan, right? Not the 100-unit plan, just to clarify.
Yes.
So the parking in this is based on this layout.
Well, let's, let's, let's get off the subject again and speak to that point. I don't even know that it's, I do know what we're talking about, but it's sort of unclear at this point what is before us. I believe it's only what, the 156-unit plan is officially before us. Is that correct, Peter? Or are we, are you telling us that that has gone by the wayside?
Let me cite what Ed Marchand said. No, the 156 units has not gone by the wayside. What we said from the beginning when we fairly quickly switched to a potential, as we called it, possible 100-unit plan, that we were open to that and we got into the lengthy, you know, back and forth hearings, which then ultimately led to the recent design workshops. So it comes down to really what I said before. There's been some good feedback. It may not do the trick for the applicant, but we now know the things that you're looking for and we will come up with a plan that will have the detail that we believe will allow you to make a decision. And the peer review and everything was done for larger plans. We believe, as my letter to you that was submitted Friday said, that we've satisfied everything. There's going to be some more detail submitted by Don Bracken, as my letter said. But in essence, what we're saying is if we reach yes based on what we submit and you approve a plan that we say we believe is acceptable to us, then presumably we would accept that. But if we don't reach something, you know, that is agreed by both sides, then the various iterations are on the table and we have reserved the right to go back to 156. So it doesn't matter that there's been negotiations, as Ed said, there's always back and forth and potential redesigns, which we have clearly done. So the important point is what you said, that I already said earlier. Yes, we agree for you to review and make a logical decision or a decision of any kind on, on one of these later iterations. Yeah, we need to give you some more detail and that's what we're going to do. So that really explains where we're at and I don't think it's any different than most of the other 40B hearings that I've been involved in.
Okay, that's fair.
I just want to elaborate on that for a second because as you guys continue to roll out some of your ideas that would be acceptable, there may or may not be another plan. So I don't want him to overpromise that there's going to be another plan.
That's fine.
Can I just correct the record? He says all the problems have been solved except for this. There's at least six fatal defects in what they proposed so far.
Fatal here or fatal in a later venue? Because if it's later.
I can go, I can go through it now or I'll send you a letter to reply to Freeman's letter.
The letter would be better, I think.
That will outline that there are six, at least six items that they have failed to provide, which should cause you to deny this project.
How about the letter? If, then we'd have someone look at it and if we agreed with you, we might go that route. So getting back to some parameters, frontage, we talked, go ahead, George.
I just wanted to comment just briefly on Paul's comment. That would be very helpful to have something in writing from, you know, on, on the issues that are outstanding on the project. I wanted to bring up, I know we're talking about a limited extension at this point and I don't want to belabor the point, get into a huge argument. The way I envision this is there should be at least two further public hearing sessions, not just a, an extension to a. sessions, not just a, an extension to accommodate one where you're issuing a denial or an approval with conditions. At best, if, if the developer came back with a new plan and it, it was more in line with, with the, with sort of the input that you're giving, there is still, still a lot of issues to address in the public hearing process. You know, the sewer issue, the water issue, anything else that the abutters come up with, you know, there is, and that's not even, that, that's assuming productive hearing time as, as tonight has been very productive. But even at your most productive level, this is worth at least two more public hearing sessions. So not, not trying to drag it out or aggravate the developer by committing to too many extensions, but there should certainly be a long enough extension to contemplate at least two public hearing sessions so we can talk about all this on the public record.
I agree 100%. I, I, I'm appreciative of your optimism it's only going to take two. I think more than two, but, but maybe not. If there's a new plan, but do we want, let, can we maybe get through the little list of thoughts and then we'll go to the extension?
So what did we decide on parking? Sorry. Was it .75 per bedroom for condo, one per bedroom for duplex and two per cottage?
Does anybody need their car any less if they live in a condo than they, if they live not?
No, but it's just there are different regulations in our zoning code, so, you know, and we can't.
But if I'm living in a condo, I wouldn't need my car any less, so I don't know why I asked.
Well, that's a bigger question.
Don't, 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 back and forth, please.
Sorry.
So 70 bedrooms times .75, if we use that math, is 52 bedrooms, 52 parking spaces.
Oh, again, it's not the number of spaces, it's the ratio we're interested in. So why don't we just make it easy, one per bedroom?
Okay.
Without swallowing up all the green space.
Well, and then we can say, oh, well, then there's no green space.
Well, then we say, we can say, we can say for green space, what do we want the percentage to be? I mean, what it?
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Really, I guess, a question or a response maybe is more accurate. I agree with trying to give us the guidance, absolutely we want it, but if you say across the board, one parking space per bedroom, there are a lot of, regardless of which type of unit, there are a lot of the two, three, four, and if we still have them, the five bedroom units. And from my experience and all the ITE, Institute of Definishmentation Engineers, I just, I know I'm not the expert, but I, I'm really just stating that I can't imagine that there needs to be three or four parking spaces or five per the units that happen to be three or four bedrooms. It just, I've never seen it.
I think we said two. Those are for cottages.
That includes the public parking too on the street, doesn't it?
Yeah.
The visitors.
Yeah.
I don't think one per bedroom, to your point, on the five bedroom. So I thought it was two per house.
Yes.
One per bedroom for X, for the other things.
The duplex.
For the duplexes and the multifamily.
And the multi-family. And then some percentage, so let's say that.
It doesn't make sense to have one per bedroom for the duplex, if three bedroom units, and have only two spaces for the cottages.
Cotages, which range from three to five.
Right. That's just inconsistent.
Well, it's inconsistent, but it's consistent with our zoning bylaw.
So how's this, how's this for a thought? One per bedroom for the multifamily and duplexes. And a minimum of, I, somebody would have to do this better than I'm going to do it, but you would have a minimum of two per cottage.
Right, that brings you 182.
And then some, some factor for the extra bedrooms.
For additional bedrooms beyond the two.
On the site or is that included in the public parking?
It would be included on the site.
The big site.
Yes, not each individual house. Each individual house only has two bedrooms and then the.
Two parks.
Two parking spaces and the public parking would have to take up the rest of it.
.75 for any of the cottages, and the other scenarios.
For the additional bedrooms.
So 186 divided by .75 is 93 plus 46, nine, 139, 140.
Depending on the units, so let's, let's, let's just say there needs to be, we've given you, I think, some, have we, have we finalized that or not?
Yeah, I think you have an idea.
There's a significant difference between .75.
I agree.
I agree. The cottages and two per cottage.
I think, I think if you did this math, you would end up with around 235 parking spaces on this, on the, in the development.
Well, how about this?
Based on two per cottage?
Two per cottage.
And then, no, that was .75 per bedroom.
Oh, the X would be .7, oh, so a five bedroom would be, or a four bedroom would be three bed, would be three units, three parking spaces.
Right, I just took 186 and divided it by .75.
I think the .75 works. It'd be point, it, that, a four bedroom house would need three spaces and the, the space can, you might have to walk to the space, but that's okay. Not on, not on, it's individual sites.
So that's 234 roughly total, I think.
With, with this number of rooms.
There's plans, I know, I know. So I'm just giving them a, relax, I'm just giving them a.
You're getting a little tense.
You are, just a, an idea given this, it's not saying, to say that they can fit in.
So you're saying on the cottage, there would be two spaces for the house, but if it's, if it's, they're all for.
No, I took the total number of bedrooms in the cottages and multiplied it by .75.
So the cottages is going to be .75.
And then you minus out the 44 or the 88 that they're going to have and that leaves a certain number on the side.
Okay.
Okay.
Frontage, we talked about 60, minimum, minimum, what?
Setbacks?
Setbacks, good point. Five and 10?
I like the five and 10.
Five and 10, I'm good with that. Everybody else?
Five on the sides and 10 on the rear?
No.
No, you can see a 1.5, 1.10.
Yeah.
That's the sides, what about the front?
Well, the front, we haven't got there yet.
That's a good point, though. What about the front?
Yep, I was thinking 10 feet. Hang on.
10 feet?
Well, you're going to have parking spaces.
What?
Parking could be.
Yeah, it's fine, but they still have, the house has to still be 10 feet back from the, it's still a front.
Parking space is going to be about 18.
Yeah, but the park.
But then the house is.
With the frontage expanded, you'll have room for that.
Yeah, and the parking space can also be on the side, so I think.
A minimum of 10, is that reasonable for us?
Yeah.
Obviously, you have to get the parking on there as well. Two of those spaces, two of those .75 spaces calculation have to be on the site of each house.
That's right, that's right. And that it will include steps and other things, correct, on the front? You can't have your steps in the 10-foot setback.
I'm all for that.
Do you want to talk about side-by-side spaces versus tandem spaces?
I think it should be varied.
It can be however they can fit it, I think.
I mean, I think it'll look nicer on the, on the, in the development to have varying.
So we're okay with tandem, is what you're saying?
Yeah, here and there, I think I'm okay with that.
And then what do we think about, what do we think about rear setback, five feet?
Yeah, I would think it would be five feet, yeah, five feet is good on the rear.
Law line is here, right, this is buffer.
Yeah. And then do we need to address ground cover ratio? Or is that not part of our review?
Well, I'd like to know what it is.
Ground cover ratio is excellent.
They had some figures before.
I would suggest 40% max ground cover ratio.
What was it before, though? Does anybody remember?
Well, what is it in 5,000, 5,000 square foot?
It's going to 40.
I think it's 30.
No, it's 40.
No, no, it's 50, but they want to change it to 40.
No, it's 40.
No, it's 50. I live in the, always choose 50.
In R5, I live in R5 and it's 40.
Okay. Depends where you live.
Yeah, I just looked it up, because I, oh, got it.
But what, what were they proposing? What were they proposing before?
I have no idea.
Well, there was a figure.
You know?
You guys had a, you presented a figure, there was a list of waivers.
I think they were well within if we could.
Yeah, I think so too.
5,000 square foot, 2,000 square foot footprint.
Yeah, maybe they were at 30.
I think you were at 30, Jamie, actually.
Let's go with 30, 30. We're good with 30?
Yeah.
Yeah, the condos were different.
The condos different.
Not necessarily, if you get that con, if they're smaller.
Well, and if this is considered one lot, how are these going to be separated?
Well, that, that, that's a whole nother problem with public hearing to determine how the condo docks work. I mean, you could condo each lot or each building.
Right.
Yeah, but then you have.
Or you could have the whole condo.
You know, Jamie, are you planning on doing that?
Let's not get, let's not get stuck in that minutia right now, please, unless, no.
Sorry, my fault.
The condos are the condos, the cottages are separate, not part of the condo, so.
No, no.
No, we understand that.
No, that's not what we were saying, but whatever, we don't need to.
There are different ways to do it, but.
Yeah, we don't need to do it.
We don't.
So I, so.
Okay, so we took ground cover ratio 30%.
If the bylaw is 40%, why?
The bylaw, what is?
The bylaw is 4%. Right?
Or the zoning that's here is 4%.
It's not, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not 5,000 square foot zoning.
No, it's.
Yeah, yeah, she was mentioning just in R5, it was 40%.
Do we need to talk about?
Street was, cannot need a waiver.
No waiver on the street.
No waiver on the street, which you guys were, were fine with the last time.
Two-way streets?
I think some should be two-way.
I think this, this one, well, Lisa, on your, your plan looks the best. Was it this one they were saying?
I don't, that doesn't look like two-way to me. Because all the parking is going in this direction, that's a one-way street.
Can you show me where you were going to have two-way, Jamie?
I mind, yeah.
Oh, you do mind, sorry.
Well, you don't have to show us on this plan, because I don't think that's the plan.
Okay.
So.
Where do you think there's two-way?
Well, no, I just want them to ask, to, to show us where two-way is versus one-way.
I don't see any two-way.
Yeah, they all look too narrow to be two-way.
I think it should be whatever works with the, with the plan that evolves.
It could all be one-way, yeah, let's, let's, I don't think that's, we need to stipulate, I mean, if, if the road width is 40, you probably can fit two-way.
Right. That's a good point.
40 excluding the parking.
By the way, some of your condo plans had no bedrooms, bathrooms in the basement when there were two bedrooms down there. You might want to, I think you probably, by code. Okay. No worries, I, I didn't, just.
Sidewalks?
Sidewalks, we've gone over a lot of this before and, but at, at one point, it was sidewalks both sides of the street. I can see with this plan not having sidewalks encroaching on the green space, if you will, put sidewalks on the other side.
I think you need sidewalks in front of, yeah, yeah, you don't need them on both sides of the street. You should need a minimum of one side.
I think so.
I, I would like to see two, but if everybody else feels differently.
Well, I think here, if this was the plan that's presented in the, in the beginning pod, you, that straight road, you would have them on both sides.
Both sides of the street there.
Yes.
At one of the other meetings that you guys were talking about having the sidewalks on both sides, it was when their houses were lining both sides of the road, not where there was a green space in the middle. It was a worry of people having to cross from their house across to the cross, sidewalk, to walk down the sidewalk. So if just around that center green area didn't have it, it seems like everything else would be safe to, back to what you're required before.
I think that's what we were saying.
So sidewalks on both sides where there's not the green space?
Yeah. How do we feel about the 30, well, Chris said that they can get the 32-foot building to 30-foot feet.
I think that should happen.
I think that's a given then, right?
Yes.
How do we feel about the, the, I know it's not our job to redesign the, the things, but I, I personally would like to see the, the four module building go by the wayside and have more two-module buildings.
I think they're two.
I haven't actually, I'm not a big fan of the raised garden structure, you know, the. Excuse me?
The half-berry basement?
Yes. This doesn't seem.
I mean, certainly nicer for the basement people.
It is, it is absolutely, it's just, it's so atypical for them.
It's a little atypical. This whole thing is something.
Yeah, that's true.
Just to, if I could ask you to speak on hearing time for the architectural review, I understand, obviously, this doesn't go in front of the HDC, but these are new buildings, these multifamilies and the duplex, they're very large. Obviously, you've made comments here tonight, but I mean, as a, just as a compare, contrast, the HDC would spend, we would probably have the applicant in maybe three or four times, I'm not suggesting this here, but for a view of those types of structures, recent past precedent, we've had the applicant in maybe four or five times to review and bring up appropriate structures with additive massing and heights and so on and so forth. So I just wanted to bring that up, thank you.
And I appreciate that, I think, I don't think we're there yet. You know, I, I think that hopefully the, the larger buildings will be smaller buildings still.
Can I answer your question just from expectations or do you want to get through your list? Well, once we, once we have a site plan that we think works and they're happy with, I mean, at some point, we'll get developed architectural plans for these buildings. We're not approving sketches.
Yeah, absolutely, that, that's part of the, the next.
Not for the bigger buildings?
No.
No. No, they were, they were sketches. We only had the cottages hardline.
We only had the cottages sideline.
No.
Well, we never got.
But I think we'd want to have submitted CAD drawings, we don't want your freehand drawings.
I think that's a given, that once we get to a site plan, if we get to a site, a basic plan with the basic sketch of the building.
We need to see four elevations.
We're going to have full sets of plans, that's, that's a requirement, is it not?
Well, 40B is based upon former plans, but there's something between the sketches we've seen and the set plan.
Well, how do you make an, I, I'm just curious, I don't mean to disagree with, but how do you make architectural decisions if you don't have, I'm not saying a full construction set.
Right, we're just talking about hardline.
No, I, I would guess that once, if we reach agreement, developing CAD plans will, you'll get CAD plans for the multifamily buildings.
Right.
But that wouldn't be part of the public hearing? It would be, because it's part of the HDC, it's part of the HDC process.
That's how you're doing your ultimate condition.
Yeah, I mean, we did it.
You're going to want a plan that shows how those patios work and some kind of rendering so that you know what you're getting.
Okay. How about the ratio of, yeah, maybe this is not, can we talk about the ratio of bedrooms to acres?
I don't, I don't think so.
No? No, I guess.
To come up with a plan, I think.
Maybe.
I mean, if it's.
I think that, I think you ought to, in my opinion, you ought to keep in mind the ratio of what's been done out here before, vis a vis your five bedroom units, you know, if you want a lot of five bedroom units, again, maybe there are fewer overall units. I mean, I know it's a tug and a push, pushing and pulling.
Can I ask one question? There was the waiver list, Linda Durant's is five gladlands, so.
Linda, do you have that updated?
Yes, just because there were bridges and things in it.
Again, quite frankly, I still think we're, I'm not going to ask the, we're, we're Again, quite frankly, I still think we're, I'm not gonna pass the, what, we're, we're going to go over the waiver list ultimately.
And we had, and we had asked for some topo and height calculations, I don't know if that's still something that's important at this point, but that would be after we got a site plan, it was more-
Yeah.
For, for more to our liking.
Do you want 3D?
No, not yet. All right, is there anything else that we can help out with? Other than- How about the extension? What do you think?
So there were some dates that were circulated, I think the March twenty-sixth date works for us.
No, that's the next meeting, what, what about an extension?
So, uh, we'll extend to April fourth.
Okay, I, I don't care when you extend to, frankly, if you wanna go to the fourth, I just don't like spending my time worrying about the sort of Damocles, so if you, if you're thinking we're making progress and are moving towards a solution after this meeting, obviously, it's fine, we can only, you can only extend it to what you want, but it's not going to be finished by April fourth. And then we have to meet again, keep in mind to either close the hearing on the fourth. And I don't think, quite frankly, what's today? What's the date?
November eleventh.
I don't, do you think you're gonna really have a new, well, if you're willing to develop a new plan, are you gonna have it in two weeks?
So, I, look, my partner's not here, obviously, there's a lot to go through with him. So that's what we talked about, that's what we agreed to, April fourth is, is what I'd like to extend to, it sounds like the twenty-sixth works for the next meeting, and, um, that's all I can offer you at the moment.
Okay. I gotta check, 'cause I, I said yes to the twenty-sixth, but, um- Tuesday, I feel like an illness coming over me. I would just like to say for the record, we have no interest in, uh, dragging this on. I, I would, I for one would like to begin to hope we get to resolution. So anyway-
We certainly have no, we have no interest in dragging it on, but we do have an interest in coming up with a plan that works.
Absolutely.
In order to do that, we need some time to do it.
Right.
Frankly, throwing, you know, sort of holding an end date over our heads isn't, it's not helpful for me. You know, but, but I also get, so.
What I, what I, uh, who cares what I object to, um, I guess we can close the hearing, if, if, if push comes to shove, can we close the hearing at any time? For instance, if, 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 at the twenty-sixth meeting?
Yeah, well, you'll, you'll have to if they're not extending it beyond the fourth, but the difficulty there, and I think, yeah, I'm sure Mr. Freeman, Peter's aware of it, your obligation is to evaluate the original application.
Right.
So you're gonna have to do a decision based upon that hundred-and-fifty-six unit development.
Yeah, just to be clear, we would be voting on the hundred, we would be voting in some fashion on the hundred-and-fifty-six units.
And another thing, I mean, now there's availability on the third, the fourth, the fifth, well, you, you-
I didn't fill it in.
You didn't fill it in, but, you know, I'm not gonna hold those dates, and then I'm gone for two weeks at the end of April, so, you know, it's-
Mr. Chair, I mean, it, yeah, it may be a problem for Jamie that he doesn't have Josh here, but it, it just isn't realistic to say April fourth.
It's a hundred percent not realistic.
I mean, even a showing of good faith is to say May fourth, and then it gives you the opportunity to start to tee up some more sessions for April.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, we can just confirm a meeting then for the, you know, before the, I guess between the twelfth and the twenty-second of April, there's, the building's closed, must be closed for school break.
I mean, even if they give you a plan that you could approve, then there's so many other issues that you would need to address to condition the project, but it's just not realistic to close by the fourth of April.
I know that, why the applicant doesn't know it, I don't get, but, um-
You could, to deal with schedules and uncertainty, you could, could schedule both March twenty-sixth, which seems like that's the next hearing, and also April fourth. I understand your concerns about extensions and all that, but at least that does give certainty as to, you know, to new hearings.
And that gives you enough time, that's Thursday.
At the next hearing in March, will we see a complete set of plans or not?
Yeah, we don't have to, you don't, we don't have to quiz them, it's up to, it's up to the applicant to produce what they produce.
That's what I was gonna say, that's all.
If it's not a full set of plans or if the information's inadequate, we'll, we'll be in the same place, again. So I think it behooves the applicant to provide more information, but, uh, anyway.
Well, we would urge you, if they don't give an extension, we'll give you a, a letter giving you the grounds to deny this project based on their, based on their unwillingness to give you the time to further pursue this.
Yeah, we'll, we'll cross that bridge, if it's the, so the fourth is the day?
No, the twenty-sixth.
No, we're talking about the extension right now, all right, well, let's get that little bit of paperwork done.
So where did he, what did he take or do?
The fourth of April.
But we're not scheduling a meeting for the fourth.
That's just-
Are you asking, is it scheduled for the fourth?
Well, first the twenty-sixth, and I don't see how it hurts to schedule it, if that would happen.
I'm gonna check my schedule. Well, you have to check his schedule.
You can do that then, if you have to, I would recommend voting, uh, continue to do it now.
Yeah, let, let, let's, um, first vote on the extension, do we, uh, can someone make a motion to accept the extension of the April fourth?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Who wants to second it? Any further discussion?
Who's second, please?
Jim. No, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the next meeting, uh, Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, here's the work for everybody.
Here, is that in this room?
You have to, you have location.
Yeah, yeah, no, uh, all the locations are available. Does anybody feel like we should go back to the, uh, other building?
Yep.
Yeah.
With the live stream, it would be great.
Yeah, I think, I think people would appreciate the live stream, but I know some people still watch.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's the headless woman.
Is there any reason not to go back to the other building, did you not check on that venue?
On the twenty-sixth, all means, uh, four venues are available. I checked into four venues.
Let's go back then.
Let's go back there.
That's auditorium, right?
No, 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 I'm talking about going back to, uh, PSF.
What's PSF? Oh, yeah. Let's go back there, that's even better.
At the risk of it being overcrowded.
Well, it's not overcrowded here, so I don't think that's an issue.
Well, people have to come here if they wanna go, 'cause they can't watch, whereas PSF, at least they can watch.
Yeah, no, I think, let's go back to PSF, Ed, you're not available that day, it says.
The twenty-sixth, I am.
Are you ready, okay.
Yeah, you just-
Four thirty, four thirty?
All right, four thirty on the twenty-sixth?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Lisa makes the motion, who wants to second it? Jim seconds it, any further discussion? No, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
When's our regular meeting?
Our, our regular meeting's Thursday.
This Thursday?
Yeah.
Check, it's already posted.
And we'll wait then to schedule the next one, I guess.
I can certainly book the room, just to-
All right, a couple other items that Susan would like to-
Just on the next proposed plan, um, the next iteration, if we could see, I know we talked a long time ago, but I know it's gonna come up again, how trash for the multifamily is gonna be addressed, like whether you're gonna have, like, a dumpster for them, or they're gonna have some, in, I don't know, whatever. Um, and then also, if there's any kind of playground for kids, I will just say, I'm not a huge fan of that basketball court, it just seems like more impervious sur- surface, I'd rather see it like green space, maybe like a bocce court or something, and then a playground or something else. Um, and then I think they were getting their mail in the rec hall place, is that still gonna be the plan? Okay.
For every, for every unit?
Every unit, but not the, um-
Not the cottages?
Not the cottages, well, they'll just, oh, them too? Okay.
I mean, I hate to say it, but direct building is another meeting, so we got a lot of meetings left. Unless we begin to, we have to get off the site plan, so it's either, in my opinion, we, so to get to the site plan next time, in large measure, or at least in the general number of buildings that are on the site plan, or, or, you know, we have to consider some alternatives. Anything else that you wanna say?
I don't know.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, so I did a little math while we were sitting here, and whatever, I, I don't even know if anybody in the room would wanna hear this, but I just like current versus a potential suggestion. So currently, there's four duplexes, what if we increased to eight duplexes? So that goes from twenty-four bedrooms to forty-eight bedrooms. And then on the condos, decreased, stayed with six buildings, but had six with four units each, so that's seven bedrooms per building, and that brings it from seventy bedrooms total to forty-two bedrooms, so you'd go from seventy condos to twenty-four condos, I know it's a lot less, is that right?
What's the total number of bedrooms?
It would go from, um, the total number of bedrooms would go from two eighty to two fifty-nine, like total in the whole-
But I meant on the-
Condo?
Condo and-
Seventy bedrooms to forty-two bedrooms.
Right, and then the, but you're increasing the-
I increased the duplexes, like doubled the duplexes.
So that was, those were twenty-four, so they're forty-eight.
Yep, and then on the cottages-
So you still have ninety bedrooms for those two buildings.
Yeah, but it just looks different, right?
You haven't reduced the number of bedrooms, though, so that's-
Well, I will, I will, so then, um, yeah, because I've decreased it by four, because there's, you lose, you increase the twenty-four bedrooms and the duplexes, you lose four in the condos.
Is this a drastic change to-
No, 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 I'm just trying to figure out, like, where they could find a little more room and still get, anyway, then on cottages, I, I'm just trying to do math, okay? 'Cause I'd like to get us to a place where we can have an agreement. So, and then you could go from forty-four cottages to forty cottages, you'd have ten affordable, thirty, uh, fair market, and that would be a total of a hundred and sixty-nine bedrooms. And then you, so the whole project would drop from the two eighty bedrooms to a two fifty-nine. It's not, you're not losing that much, but it was just a way that I thought it would get, and that, that is funny enough, gets from one oh-four units to eighty-eight, which I didn't even plan on that, but that, I know that was a number that was thrown around, so maybe something like this is feasible, where you decrease the condo building size and increase the number of duplexes. I don't know.
Okay.
Just a suggestion.
It's a good suggestion, although I will say this, um, there's a thousand ways to look at this mathematically, 'cause I've looked at nine hundred and ninety-nine of them, and, uh, you know, you, you can pick one criteria that's more important than the other one, and this variable that changes that variable. The plan has to work for the site, for an end target, and ultimately for the developer and us. The number that Susan just spoke of is not necessarily the number.
No, it's just-
But there, there are a number of ways to get to different numbers.
I think she's just showing, quite easily, you can scale back the size of the buildings without losing that many-
A hundred percent.
Yeah, yeah, just to, just to try to find a little bit of wiggle room, that was really my only point.
The other thing I will say is, again, in terms of the fact that you've brought up the economics a number of times, your costs are going down too, arguably, if you don't have to create as much parking, if your unit count goes down. You know, there are some, you don't have to sprinkle the buildings if they get smaller, I, I don't think. You know, there, there might be some push and pull there. Your infrastructure's cost pretty much stays the same, but anyway, we don't have to get into it. Okay? What else?
That's it, right?
I just, one general comment, I wanna keep up with our planning board comment, and I feel like, I'm not sure we're getting the input that maybe we need from the planning board.
They have given us a very lengthy letter based on the most recent submission in October. We do have that, I can send it to you again.
I'd like to get some input from the fire marshal.
On this new plan?
On the new plan.
Fire chief.
Yeah, and we don't have a definitive meeting.
I know.
Well, that, you said that, he, whatever, it's gonna work.
It's gonna, there's a chicken and egg thing, that we, we're, in my opinion, so far, you know, not so far, we're a little bit apart on the number, on, on the building, so, and the site plan. So once we get there, assuming that it meets the code, we would get some input. I mean, John Chessia still has to review the storm drainage, and that's why, to George's point, it's gonna take a heck of a lot more than two meetings, unfortunately, um, to really, once we get into the nitty-gritty, but we would at least by then have an agreed, outlined, scalable plan, which I don't think we have.
Right, and I remember at, um, Abrams quarry, no, Sager's path, we had it very quickly, and then we got to talk about the-
Exactly.
Minutias, the particulars for however many meetings that went.
But you've gone up for a year.
Not quite.
How long are you gonna give them? It just goes on and on.
As long as it takes.
Well, we're trying to be responsible.
At some point, you can fish a cupcake.
We can, anyway, we will.
Is that really gonna end up with the best outcome, do you think?
For the town?
Is that gonna, well, how's that gonna work out, in your mind?
I think it will, I think you've got a defective project, I think you've got one that doesn't fit the site, I think you've got one that doesn't work in many ways, and then we can get that. We think that we can get that upheld in the courts.
Well, I hope so, 'cause that makes me very afraid.
Yeah, it goes to HAC, why don't you? Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure that we-
I don't trust Paul's ability to squash this thing at HAC, frankly.
Why don't you send us a letter to that effect, and, again, we're not there. You know, again, and we're not doing this 'cause we wanna string it out any longer. We're trying to be responsible for, in terms of the big picture, so, I haven't said that, let's move on.
Should I make a motion to close the hearing?
Please. Second. All right, Lisa made the motion.
Adjourn, adjourn, oh, yeah.
Yeah, 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 good point! Wait, that, that was not a point, it's-
To adjourn the meeting tonight.
All right, you made the motion to adjourn the meeting tonight.
Yes.
And Jim, did you second that?
I seconded that, perfect.
Any further discussion?
I didn't say public-
No, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous.